Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 12, 2024 regular school committee meeting at 5:30 p.m. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to convene in executive session, which is a non-public session, to discuss the approval of the May 22, 2024 executive session minutes, collective bargaining pertaining to the TTA, ESP, aides, teachers, custodian secretaries tag, which is the Chixpre Administrator Group, the nurses' bargaining units, and the school committee will reconvene in open session after the executive session.
So moved.
Hi, second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. B. Johnny Smith, second by Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Par- uh, Mr. Parsons.
Oh, boy.
(laugh) Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
All right, Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. B. Johnny Smith.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. For unanimous vote, school committee will reconvene in open session after the executive session at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
We are reconvening at 6:31 PM. If you would all join us, to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, in our meeting announcement, tonight's Regular School Committee meeting will be televised and recorded, may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22, Verizon Channel 34, or on youtube.com/tuxburytv. Under the open-meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify themselves. Seeing nobody, we're going to start now with our recognitions. We have some special guests in the audience, and I will ask Mr. Terry O'Regan to please introduce.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. We certainly do have some special guests in the audience. In the district, we have nine retirees from our school system this year totaling over 200 years of service in education to thousands of Tewksbury students. You can see their names in the presentation of retirees for 2024. We have four of those retirees with us tonight to be recognized. I'm going to start by calling up the Wynn Middle School principal, Mr. John Ware, and retiree Ms. Elaine Sinclair. Mr. Ware will say a little bit about Elaine, but first, I want to personally thank Elaine. We met 18 years ago when Elaine was started as the case manager at the Ryan School. She led us through many a special ed meeting, and I know I speak for all of us. And Elaine, I hope you know, so many of your colleagues say you are simply the kindest person they've ever met. And Elaine, I wish you the best in this much-deserved retirement. Mr. Ware will have a few words to say about you, and now wishing you all that free time for you to enjoy your passion and your, in music, and your talents as a flautist. So, thank you, Elaine. We'll hear from Mr. Ware.
It's my pleasure to be up here with Elaine. I started at the Wynn in 2006, so we've been down a long road together. And her commitment to students and supporting families to support what the students need to get their best education has been outstanding through the years, her commitment. You said it, I mean, we had a celebration for her a few weeks ago where teachers created slides to sort of celebrate her qualities in kindness, it was just dripping off the slides. I mean, she just, I've never heard a negative word from Elaine. She's always been to support, always there to support students and staff. She did things like kindness, Mr. Long and I and Ms. Cordero now sometimes find chocolates on our desk in the morning. Someone sneaks through the office at night and leaves chocolate, and that's just a little sign of who she is. She's the only staff member, I don't know if any of you remember the show The Waltons, but she calls me John Boy. That's her little pet name for me. And so, we've had a great relationship. We're certainly going to miss you so much, Elaine.
No, thank you.
And really appreciate all the hard work you've done for our school.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your support as well. Yeah, I think we have a good... So, I'm going to ask now, you're Elaine Johnson, you stand right front of this program. You can stand right to the front of it, then we're going to get it. All right, Jason? All right, we got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. Congratulations.
Okay, and retiring from the Ryan School is Ms. Sue Hogan. We celebrated her at the last meeting as she was the recipient of the Chrissy Palomino Outstanding Educator Award in our district. Ms. Hogan will be sorely missed at the Ryan School for her camaraderie, her expertise, and her leadership and support to so many staff, students, and families. I wish you, in your retirement, the time to enjoy your family, and I was gushing when you're showing me pictures of that little cutie, of a granddaughter. We met here last meeting, and I invite you and Mrs. McGinnis up to the podium so Ms. McGinnis can say some nice words about you.
There aren't enough words to say what Mrs. Hogan has done for the Ryan School. We were here recently, so I won't give everybody her full resume. I will, however, say that there were few people that would have said yes to Mr. Hart and I when we called during COVID to see if she'd like to take on a new challenge as the case manager at the Ryan School where she could then write IEPs and COVID IEPs at the same time. So, Sue is never one to shy away from something that's challenging. She's never one to shy away if she thinks it will help students and families. She continues to do that, and I have already sought permission for you to keep your device, please, so that we could email you as we come up with new things. But in the words of Mr. Ware, I think kindness is a word for Sue, but even more than that, she's sort of the mother of the entire building. If anybody's in tears, they're headed to Sue's office, and I mean that in the most wonderful way possible, including me. So, there's not one of us that hasn't cried our way through the case manager's office with a kind word, always a piece of chocolate, it must run with your profession. I thank you for the extra 20 pounds. I have eaten my way to love Sue, but so has our entire school, but even more than we have. The kids will miss Mrs. Hogan. They ask every morning, where is she? She's the morning greeter to every kid at our school, and I do mean every kid comes through that front door and they all see Mrs. Hogan. But also, our families have really been touched by the work that she does, thorough, thoughtful, and always compassionate. You will be missed, not just by me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Just for a photo, thank you.
Is that a picture? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Chair. Next, retiring from our Center Elementary School is Ms. Lori Highland. If Lori and Principal Harding can come up to the podium. And while they are, let me just say a few words. Lori and I actually have known each other since our, two of our boys were actually right pre-kindergarten, I think, over 28 years. We have worked on several committees and parent groups together, and she was even my own daughter's teacher in third grade when Lori was at the Heath Brook. And even though, Lori, and this is something, I know I speak for everyone, even though you have been teaching and working with all of us as a volunteer and as a teacher and as committee member for 28 years, you have never slowed down, you have never stopped learning to master, whether it's new technologies or new teaching methods for our students, especially as a true championship, a true champion of differentiated learning for our students. Thank you so much, Lori. I invite Principal Harding to say a bit, but I want to just say, I hope this isn't the last we see of you and that you'll continue to want to nurture that differentiation and learning and technology in whatever way we can get you back. Thank you.
We hope it's not the last we see of you. Lori, I can't say enough, she has always been there for the families, the students, the staff, the district, whether it is on committees creating slide decks for all of our various programs that we have had, supporting the school and community spirit, creating pictures of our studios with Red Sox gear and with Dragon gear, and we have a wall full of Harry Potter teachers that are queen of green screen and technology. But I do have one question, who's taking over the technology?
I haven't been hired yet.
Okay. But she truly has been a champion for the school, very, very lucky and blessed to have worked side by side with Lori. She's always there for, like I said, for everybody in the building, always willing to go and help me along, whether it's the district, the students, the staff, and the families, and you will truly be missed by everyone, including myself.
I'll miss all of you.
Thank you, Lori. I know. I know. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Okay, Madam Chair, we also have Ms. Laura Sullivan with us tonight, currently from the Heathbrook School. Quite honestly, I think the first time we met, you were maybe joking about something in the Ryan School cafeteria with me, and that was 24 years ago when I was a brand-new teacher at the Ryan. Laura was part of the food service team there and absolutely made every single teacher feel welcome or laugh with a smile at her humor as they went through the line in the caf. I also had the privilege of teaching your daughter, who I know is in the audience, and I had the privilege of seeing your two grandchildren at the Heathbrook yesterday. So, you deserve this time, Laura. We will miss your humor. We will miss the time when you visited us in the office and all of it. We will miss your leadership in food service, but most of all, I wish you the time to enjoy those grandchildren and your family together. So, I'm going to invite Ms. Mugford up to talk about your service in our Food and Nutrition Services Department.
So, this is Laura Lee. We have a little joke, Laura Lee and Deborah Lee. We go to begin with like Mutt and Jeff, right, through the years, right? I've been working with Laura, what, 23 years? And I can tell you, Laura and I have been through everything together, new guidelines, new compliance, the kids, she's going to cry with me. She's got the biggest heart, but I have to say, she's sassy, too. That's what we love about Laura. She's got that reputation throughout the whole district. But anyhow, Laura and I have been through so much together. She's been a mentor, she's worn many, many hats, so many hats in this district, let me tell you. She's touched everybody in food service. She's trained them, she's coached them, she's counseled me. We've gone through having our grandchildren together and all these wonderful things. So, Laura, I wanted to be up here. You certainly will be missed, so don't make me cry. I've got a birthday. And we'll be seeing each other, right? And I can just say, grateful, grateful, grateful. She's truly going to, she's, I'm trying to get it back to some, maybe a little. But we all know Laura, and we all know what her passion is, and that would be her grandchildren. So, she's going to have all this wonderful time to share with her grandchildren, all very happy about that. Anyhow, thank you, Laura.
Thank you. Thanks.
So, Laura and Deborah, you can right to the podium, we'll get a picture of you, and then I'm going to invite the other three retirees up to the podium, we'll get a picture of all four of you, okay? Okay, great, thank you. Laura, stay right there. Lori, come on, where's Elaine and Sue? Congratulations to all of our retirees who are here tonight. Thank you so much, and congratulations. All right, you got that? One more for the papers. All right, congratulations.
Thank you. 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 Thank you all for coming, and thank you for the principals, Ms. Mugford, for speaking on your behalf. It's such a joy to have you in, and I'm sorry that, you know, it's at the very end of the year. So, next we have another recognition for the Esports Rocket League.
Yeah, Madam Chair, it was only actually four years ago when the Tuxbury Public School School Committee gave their blessing for a new MIAA esports team. Since then, this team has earned four state championships and is being recognized here tonight, so I welcome Principal Long, their coach Sanford Arbogast, and the team to come on up to the podium, please. Congratulations. Look at that trophy. Oh, my gosh, trophies.
So, again, congratulations, they are the four-time reigning state champs, I think goes fall and spring, right? For the last two years, nobody's beaten them in the state championships. I'm not sure, how did you guys end up doing in the national tournament?
We came in the top 16.
Top 16 in the national tournament, too, so super impressive. Again, led by Coach Arbogast, who's really the Bill Belichick of esports. Senior Peter Impink, Junior Tophie Balloon, who's not here tonight, and then freshman Santiago Avendano. Again, the biggest thing, I think, is inspiring the younger kids, and I know the Wynn and the Ryan School also have their esports teams, which they've inspired based on their success. So, congratulations to all of them, and again, if you'd like to say something?
I just want to say how proud I am. Peter's become a true leader, like, I mean, he started this three years ago when we actually won, came in second both years to the finals, and we lost some players. We kept, we gained Tophie, we lost Andy, and we won championships. Last year, we got Yago, and I hope we can just keep building this because, like, these guys, you know, work hard and play hard and learn well together, and I'm really proud of them, so.
Okay, after we get pictures, stay right there, we have a recognition to read for you as well. Okay, all right.
Stay right there, sorry.
All right, stay right up there, and Mr. Moncada is going to read a recognition for the team.
Sure. All right, so whereas the TMHS Rocket League esports team continued to demonstrate hard work, sportsmanship, perseverance, and character throughout the 2024 competition season, team members are Santiago Avendano, Peter Impink, and Tophie Balloon, team advisor Sanford Arbogast. And whereas the TMHS Rocket League had their third straight undefeated season in the spring of 2024, the team is currently on a 38-match win streak, including both regular season or playoff matches that started in November 2022. Whereas on Thursday, May 2, the TMHS Rocket League team members Santiago, Peter, and Tophie traveled to Helix Esports at Patriot Place in Foxborough to compete in a state championship tournament. Their opponent in the semifinal match was Braintree High School Rockets, which TMHS Rocket League beat in four straight games. And whereas in the final match, they faced the Cougars from Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical High School. Tuxbury also won this match in four straight games to finish their undefeated season and win their fourth straight champ, excuse me, state championship. Whereas the TMHS Rocket League esports team have brought great pride, recognition, enthusiasm, and honor to themselves, to their parents and families, to Tuxbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the commitment and achievements of the Rocket League members Santiago, Peter, Tophie, and the advisor Sanford Arbogast.
Mr. Arbogast, is there anything that you would like to add? I would like to offer you the opportunity.
Like I said, Peter graduated, we're still looking for new players, and we're actually looking to add chess to the esports roster for next year, along with Smash Brothers and Rocket League. So, we're looking to grow in this and seeing what can happen.
And Madam Chair, we're looking to expand down a little to try to get some theater programming at our middle schools.
I know Peter was working with that as part of his senior project.
Thank you.
So, yeah, and I would like to acknowledge Peter's project. It was pretty fantastic. So, I learned a lot more about esports, a lot more about the work that Peter did as well, and I am thrilled to hear how successful that was with some of the eighth graders. So, thanks for picking it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you. And now, our student council representative, Rania, if you want to share with us kind of the end-of-the-school stuff that's going on?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So, tonight, I just have a few updates about what's happened this past month at TMHS. So, for some sports updates, with school year coming to a close, our spring sports have ended and athletes are gearing up for next year's fall sports. The fall sports signup night will be on June 13 in the gymnasium at 6:00 PM. On June 4, the Spring Sports Awards banquet was held in the auditorium, where many athletes were recognized for their hard work and accomplishments of this season. The TMHS Girls' Basketball and Soccer Boosters will be holding summer clinics in which high school athletes can volunteer to coach 5th through 8th grade students. The Tuxbury Girls' Softball Team made it to the Elite Eight, but unfortunately, they fell to Bedford on June 10. The Special Olympics were held on June 11, and the MVC Girls' Tennis Coach of the Year Award was given to Mary McDonald. Next, for some club updates, NHS is helping teachers in TMHS and the center school's front office clean out their classroom and relocate teachers to other rooms for the duration of this week. The Yearbook Club is now accepting new members, and they've already started with preparation for next year's yearbook. DECA chose a new officer team on June 3, and officer planning meetings will be on June 14. Additionally, people participating in DECA who are planning to do written papers are all meeting with Mr. Sullivan before the end of the school year. Interact Club will be participating in a variety of volunteer opportunities this summer. The Book Discussion Club will be getting a new advisor, so our advisor used to be Ms. Baines, but now it will be Ms. Canavan. The Class of 2025 has already begun planning for Senior Week and making senior t-shirts for next year. The Flocking Fundraiser is also ending very shortly, with over 80 houses flocked and less than 10 houses remaining. From Monday, July 22 to July 24, there will be a free virtual program for students interested in public health. Senior Week was held last week, with graduation being last Friday, June 7, and on the same night, all night long, was held at the Wynn Middle School. And finally, the Silby Literacy Ceremony was held on May 31 in LGI-1, in which students received cords and medals for their achievements in the language departments. That's all I have for you today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Will you be with us over the summer?
Uh, no, I won't.
So, we'll see you back in September.
Yes. Thank you.
It's been a joy having you. Any questions for Rania?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a nice summer.
You, too. Thank you.
All right, and we now have another presentation with the Tuxbury CPAC End of Year Recap. And that looks like it's teed up up there.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Ann Sechter.
And I'm Ricardo.
We are the co-chairs of the 2024-2025 school year of the Tuxbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which we lovingly refer to as the CPAC. We're here tonight just to kind of tell you what we do, who we are, what we've done this past year, and what we're looking forward to for the next year of 2024-2025. So, what is the CPAC? The CPAC is the public body which serves as an advisor to the school committee on matters that pertain to the education and safety of students with disabilities. In addition, the CPAC has a duty to meet regularly with school officials to participate in the planning, development, and evaluation of the district's special education programs. Our CPAC is a group of parents and caregivers who have children on IEPs, VIVL-4s, and other interested parties, for example, residents, advocates, teachers, staff. Together, we work to support each other in raising and educating children with disabilities. We host business meetings, support groups, family engagement events, and informational workshops. So, this year, 2024 and 2025, four members include the co-chairs, Ricardo and myself, Ann Sechter. Secretary Michelle Pratt is our reporting secretary. We are looking for a publicity secretary, whose basic job is really just to promote our events and meetings. And then we have Parents-at-Large, Crystal Anderson, Sarah Cohen, and Tricia White. We do have openings for Parents-at-Large. Basically, they are kind of the bridge or liaisons from the individual schools to the CPAC, just to collaborate on events and to make sure that all children are included in all of the school events. Some of our highlights for the year, and for those of you who are new to the board and not as familiar with what the CPAC mission is, is that we may have packed in our name, but we are not a paper pack in that we are not involved in leading engagement and activities and fun activities. Our business really is more about advocacy and advising the district to improve our special education programs and to ensure that all of our students are included in everything that we're doing. So, for that lens, we kind of extend that a bit to our community as well. So, our engagement events, the field days, we're looking at our community, trying to make sure that our students with disabilities are familiar and able to access the things that all of us have in our town, right? So, one thing this year is we visited the fire station. That was that, and he doesn't know the fire truck, right? It's exciting and fun. But part of it also was so that the folks at the fire department are familiar with our children as well, and to see them out in the community. We did, some of you participated in our school committee head before. So much of what we do really comes down to how our policies and procedures impacting our students with disabilities. So, it's really important for our families to have a clear understanding of, okay, it's for families in this town, or, you know, who impacts that future for their students. We work in collaboration with districts. We, as we've been saying years now, we want a relationship, and we really look to figure out, you know, what are we caring for our parents for information and resources that we need? So, we have an IEP forum coming up, and some people are trying on that. So, we changed, so there's training available for parents, home services, something that some of our students participate in, so we had information, right, so people understood what that sort of spots in, call in and prioritize students. We also collaborate with other packs. As Ann said, we have liaisons that attend pack meetings to make sure that events are being planned. There is thought going into making sure that they are inclusive to all our students in ways that they can help to make that happen. Parents support is crucial. Having a child with disabilities, it can be very overwhelming, there's a lot happening, just, right, with kids and battle and this aspect of AEPs. So, we do offer support groups, grant it together, tackle what challenges they're facing, but also on the process of our special education. We do share information and resources through various channels, our programs and opportunities in our area that they can benefit from. Abys, behind the scenes, we are continually working with the district to make sure that our school buildings are more inclusive, that the culture in the buildings are including everybody, and trying to advise on ways to make that happen. Transition between our schools, all of our kids struggle with it, right, every two years. Some of our students with more sporting, they need a little patch, so it's, let's start with ways to make that easier for them. And then transportation, we see a lot of anxiety around transportation, being here for ASY, the Eastern School of Services, so we've done some work with our transportation department to make sure that communication is working for all of our parents. Moving ahead for next year, we're excited about developing a mentor program. We do see if a parent are new in the district or new to having an IEP or a VIVL-4. There's a lot of, oh, my gosh, there's just so many avalanche of things that I need to know. So, we're really looking to put into place some parents that are a little bit further ahead in the journey, that could talk to a parent, be like, you don't need to know the whole encyclopedia, but that's what is here, which who you can talk to, just give a little bit of hand there to listen and to show them, you know, bringing a little more information. And also, we have our meetings and we have our support groups, but we're not reaching everybody that we need to reach, so we're talking about some kind of drop-in nights where babies, of course, who's in the month, somewhere, but somebody just wanted to reach out, they know where to find us consistently. So, some of the things that we're planning for next year, we're on talks with the, these departments, yeah, to see if they're following, they're studying, and continuing with our outreach community, that's our plans to visit the library, the credit union, and as part of those visits, we're talking to us. of those visits, we're talking to the businesses about how to make their spaces more inclusive. That's some big plans for next year.
So we have, yeah, we have open positions, we have publicity secretary, and some more parent larges are needed, so we would appreciate if anybody wants to volunteer. Please, welcome, we'd love to have you. Other ways you can get involved is coming to meetings and events, joining our Facebook group, check because on the next page, the Facebook, we have Facebook business page, just called the CPAC Tewksbury Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and the Facebook Support League, which is friendship with friends of CPAC. We do have our idol business meeting next week, June 20th, 7:00 PM. It will be a virtual, because you know how crazy this time of year is. We have an email, it's tewksburycpac@gmail.com. If you have any questions or any, please send. We just leave you with this quote, "There is no greater disability in society than the inability to see a person as more." So thank you again for having us.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Moncada?
Well, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for everything that you guys do. Do you think you'll have like your pack buddies in place before the start of the school year, or might there be some lag?
Parent larges?
Yeah, parent larges.
Yeah, I mean, we'll try to do more promoting for parent larges. Sometimes, some parents can also, or liaisons can also do a couple of tools, possible, so they can always kind of stretch and do that.
We had some parents that had a big role at a parent large, yes, he was here tonight, but you know, he was, I think, covering for schools, so it's gonna be hard though, Al she is, but you have three now, and we try to have on each school, so we'll try and.
Thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
No, I'm excited to be the school committee liaison, coming to your next meeting and learning more about what you guys do. I appreciate just the fact that you guys are taking your time out to help parents navigate through some things that you probably struggled with when you first started, so I really appreciate you helping out the community like that.
Mr. Russo?
I, first of all, I'm excited about the leadership. I think this is great, you know, as we move into the next year. I think from my perspective, that mentor program I think is enormous, that's great. If there's anything additional that the school committee can continue to be a resource, you know, obviously, you know, we have a couple liaisons that attend the monthly meetings, but if there's anything from a school committee perspective that we can do outside of that, please, you know, please bring that to us, and we will, you know, work to advocate for that as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure I asked that, Mr. Russo, because there's a lot that the school committee has to go through, too. And I know there's many continuing demands for your attention, and you're not possible. But I would ask that when you're going or negotiating with different units, special education, is there federal and state law? It can be complicated, and you are not going to be an expert on what is supposed to be happening? So I would say, before you make those decisions, make sure you're listening to the voices, that have direct contact with our children, and understand what's happening day to day. I would also say, we realize we're seeing that, and I think, Bridget, guys, I appreciate that you do your job with that, but I think we should continue that collaboration. And I would also say, when you're attending events, sporting, entertainment, or whatever it is, look around. Do you see students with disabilities? If you don't, ask why.
That's great feedback. Thank you. Mrs. Bea Johnnie Smith?
I just want to thank you. I've been attending the meetings for at least the three years that I've been on the, or two and a half years that I've been on the committee, and prior to that as a parent. And I've seen how much work is put in, whether it's through the pals, or the, the board themselves, and I do appreciate all the work that you do. And like Mr. Russo said, anything we can do to help is, you know, we're here for that, and Katie and I will be at those meetings and listening and taking notes. I look forward to more of our administration collaboration meetings that we're having to really keep the communication flowing constantly, so that we don't have lags and we can really nip things earlier when we hear about them. I think we've done a really great job with that over the past few months to address some of the concerns that have come up recently. And I just appreciate all the work you both do. Those behind you have done in the past, thank you to Al and Dina, and appreciate that, yeah.
Thank you.
And I just, my comments are, I can remember early on in my own child's education, there was a different group of people that were running the CPAC. I witnessed it kind of dissolve, and my deepest gratitude for you all coming together and doing the hard work of putting it back together. And you've done a phenomenal job at sustaining it and supporting countless number of families. If we could ask Al and Dina to please come up, we just, we brought you something to just recognize your contribution. I know, it's not much, Al, it's not much. Don't get your hopes up. But, but truly, you know, I think sometimes to get through to the other side of things, some of those conversations sometimes can be difficult and tricky. And the fact that I feel like we've been able to maintain decent relationships despite some difficult conversations that we've all had, I can just share my deepest appreciation for some of the conversations we've had, because it has changed in a lot of ways how I look at things, so, yeah.
Any thoughts?
I, I mean, you took the words right out of my mouth, and while not officially a retiree of the Tewksbury Public Schools, I feel you have been just such an amazing contributing member. And I mean that, our most recent, and Ms. Bea Johnnie Smith talked about this, collaborations on a number, whether it's a big topic or a little detail, is very meaningful, and I really look forward to that continued collaboration. For example, you talked about transitions and our principles. I mean, it really, when you bring up, you know, what the group of parents and students need, and we can come together as a whole group and participate in relevant transitions for all students, that came from the collaboration of the CPAC leaders. So I welcome that continued leadership. I so appreciate the leadership you both have brought, I know, together, but I don't know how we're going to think of CPAC without the Mancinies at the helm. So we wish you some very needed time off, I'm sure, as you have busy lives on top of serving all of our families and students, so thank you for doing that.
And we'd love to get a photo with you as well.
So I just want to say, one, we're not really going anywhere, we're still, we're still in Tewksbury, so, don't get too comfortable, okay? But, you know, we are taking a hiatus, our youngest son is going to a different school, and we'll see how that works out, and who knows, we may be back. But I do want to say especially thank you to Anne and Peg and Maureen, who isn't on the board anymore, but that's who started this journey with me, along with Al, when we kind of kick-started the CPAC again, and obviously, we couldn't have done it without them, and I really appreciate they had to sit through a lot of difficult conversations because of me sometimes, but they, you know, thanks for everything, I really appreciate that. Bridget, you've been the best chair we've ever worked with, so I want to appreciate, you know, you for listening and being open-minded, and really seeming to care about what's going on and making things better. And Kayla, you've been an awesome rep. We really, really appreciate your perspective and your support. Nick was great, too. I know he's not on the committee anymore, but he was also great, so we really appreciate that. I think we've come a long way, but I think we can keep going and do better for our most vulnerable kids, so thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Terry Regan, I'll offer the floor to you for our next introduction, introduction.
We have Ms. Felicia Chenanovich, who's here to present, where is she? There she is. To present our annual summer reading program for all of our students. Great, you have, just to kind of bring the mood to life, you have a fun little bookmark on your table there, and a little flyer of some of the things that our food service department is doing to support summer reading at the schools, which has been really fun. And you can see on the backside, all of the kids engaged. So basically, what they did is they took the Weird But True series, which is a nonfiction series, it's really interesting to kids, they love that series, and they're, they're kind of doing a different animal each, each time, and you can see even, it looks like an adult to me, dressed as, as a shark, so, and you can see there's a whole theme, so it's a lot of fun promoting the summer reading, and we love that.
Yeah, great. And if you turn in that bookmark in the fall, you get credit for your summer reading, okay? I also have the fabulous principal Bosworth with me, she's my slide advancer tonight. So thank you for having me, I'm excited to share a little bit about our summer reading program. Just to start, in the past, we've distributed actual paper copies of the summer reading packets to students, but this year, we're going green with a digital version, a digital rollout to families. So this slide deck that you're seeing tonight is live on the TPS website, including all the links that are on it, so families should have easy access. And of course, this is on the website and being shared by building principals as well. So let's start with incoming K to four students. I'm excited to share that this part of our program got a little refreshed this year. We know how important it is to encourage and nurture the habit of daily reading with our youngest learners. So in order to encourage and nurture that habit of daily reading, we're moving away from summer reading worksheet completion, and we're really leaning a little bit more into just building that practice of daily reading. So for our kindergarten and grade one students, they should be reading, you know, or their, their family should be reading to and with them for 10 to 15 minutes per day. And incoming students in grade two to four should be reading at least 15 or 20 minutes a day. We also completely revamped our suggested author list to make sure that the recommendations were more up-to-date, relevant, and engaging for students. And the series that Lori just talked about is an author recommendation on our list this summer. So students are asked to complete a summer reading bingo board in a short book log with both fiction and nonfiction text, and they're going to return it to their homeroom teachers on the first day of school for credit for summer reading and a small prize. So again, all the links are right there, if you click on the Summer Reading Program letter, that's a more in-depth explanation for parents and families about how to navigate the summer reading. All right. Oh, graphics. All right, so exciting things happening at the Ryan for incoming grade five and six students. The Ryan School will use the shared experience of a single story to help shape the culture of their school. And this year, teachers at the Ryan selected the book The Lemonade War, which is the first in a series of books that are really popular with students. The Lemonade War by Jacqueline Davies is a children's novel that follows siblings Evan and Jessie as they compete to see who can earn the most money selling lemonade before the end of the summer. The story explores themes of family, competition, entrepreneurship, highlighting the siblings' differing strengths and the value of teamwork and communication. So this summer, all students in the building will be reading that story, it's been purchased, and I believe Principal McGinnis will be distributing it shortly before kids go home. Grade five students will choose one activity, and grade six students will choose two activities from the choice board. And again, everything's linked right there for families. And moving on to The Wynn, I believe The Wynn set the precedent for us for doing a community story, and it's really been successful. So they're continuing in that tradition this summer with the book Forget Me Not by Ellie Terry, which is a middle-grade novel about Kalai B. June, a girl with a medical condition who struggles to fit in as she moves to a new town. Through her friendship with her neighbor Jin Song, she learns about acceptance, self-advocacy, and the importance of embracing one's unique different qualities. So at The Wynn, students will be asked to keep a handwritten journal of important quotations from the text. They're going to look for four passages that illustrate characterization, four passages that show major challenges that the character faced, and two passages related to the theme or lesson of the text. All assignments are going to be due September 3rd, and again, a more in-depth explanation in the journal entry template is right there in the link for the reading assignment. So I'm excited to connect with both The Wynn and The Ryan in the fall, and hear how that community conversation about those texts go. So, all right. So on to incoming TMHS students. We have, students will pick a book of their choice, suggestions are provided. Teachers also let students what, tell students what not to read, because they have upcoming texts that are going to be covered in their courses as well. Students will identify five important passages that represent the beginning, middle, and end of the text that they choose. They'll copy the five passages and bring them to English class the first week of school to answer a teacher-provided prompt. Parent signature is required, and all assignments will be due on the first day of English class at the full, full week back to school. So as I mentioned earlier, slide deck is live on the Tewksbury website. I'm always available over the summer. If families have any questions about summer reading, as well as the building principals, we're always happy to help. And we're excited to hear about students' experience with, with reading when they come back in the fall. So thank you very much, that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Was it Bea Johnnie Smith?
No, none. Thank you.
Mr. Russo?
No, it's great, thank you for sharing, we appreciate the update, and we'll be plugging it away to remind kids all summer long.
Thank you.
But thank you. And Mr. Moncada?
Yeah, thank you, it's a great program. I'm determined to make sure my sixth, incoming sixth grader does a better job, not waiting till August to finish the book.
You can read that text together, maybe, what do you think?
That's a possibility.
Okay.
The suggested book list?
Yes.
Do we work with the library at all, the town library?
Yes, they're, they're definitely partners with us in this whole thing, they, in fact, they get ahold of the suggested book list, and they make sure those books are kind of highlighted and out, so kids can get, have easy access to them, so that's definitely a resource to look into.
It's the first place my wife will take my kids to.
For sure, for sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate how you've simplified it. Yeah. I think if I look back the years?
Yeah.
It's now narrowed down, I think it's going to cause a lot, it'll cause less stress than it has in the years past, at least for parents.
That's what we hope, and it's all on one document, so if parents have kiddos in, you know, different buildings, it's just one place to access all the information.
And I love that you're including audiobooks as well.
Yeah, yep.
Is this getting sent out in like the end-of-year smore from?
Yeah, so the principals have it to push out for their end-of-year communication, and classroom teachers have it as well to share out, so you should see it in multiple spots.
It'll be in Friday's newsletter as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate you coming. And just for convenience sake, we do have some additional people with us here today, and I hate for them to have to sit through all of our business. If anybody is interested in taking Item 17A, which is the 2024-2025 student handbooks out of order, I would entertain the motion.
I mean, make a motion to take New Business A 2024 handbooks.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So at this time?
Madam Chair, I'm going to turn this over to Mrs. McDermott in one minute, but I just note for your information, even as recent as tonight, there are a couple other updates made. I'll let Ms. McDermott start with the PK through four handbook, and then we'll walk through each of them. And I welcome Ms. Bosworth and Mr. Harding up to the podium, and they're available here in thirty minutes.
Yeah, that was basically what I was going to say. As you can see, there are updates to the pending policy changes, as well as you have the information consistency with some language updates, administrator name changes, some Title I information, and we do have the principals here to talk about the handbooks and answer any questions.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Sure, we'll keep it short, because there are a few people behind us. We, we made a couple of changes that are a little bit more consistent with some of the other handbooks within the district. The first being the search and seizure procedures, where we define that a little bit more, and also talked about how we would interview students. It is consistent across all of the schools now, we put a committee together so we can update that information, give families a little bit more clarity on that piece. We identified that the homework policy will be changed as soon as, I know the school committee has a subcommittee working on the changes to the homework policy, so it's kind of a little bit of a TBD. But we also updated some of the language about homework for when families elect to go on vacation during, during the school year, which we hope they don't, but if they do, we just wanted to, again, have more consistent language, not reprimanding the work, but reinforcing. not reprimanding the work, but really having it up to the discretion of the classroom teacher as to whether or not they would be sending work home.
Help policy be consistent with the district across all the grades.
Um, and then the thing that was very important to both Mrs. Garrish and I was an update to include some more specific information about preschool attendance. It was a last-minute addition, so if you hadn't had, had an opportunity to review that, I do apologize. But we wanted to just be a little bit more specific. We've had a number of, uh, times, instances in which preschool students have not been attending school, and because they're not subject to the same laws, we wanted to really clarify what steps we would need to take should a family choose not to return or not access their services. We just wanted to be really clear. So we've updated that, that policy and also included the preschool program at the high school as well, just to make sure that we're consistent. And, and then just some name changes for some of our, uh, outgoing, removing some of our outgoing staff sadly, but also happily and adding some of our incoming staff. I think that was it?
I think that was it.
Any questions? Where is, is the preschool updates, is that in this packet?
For attendance?
Yeah.
Page nine?
Page nine.
And, and Madam Chair, if I can just jump in a little bit here. Keeping in mind that many of our preschoolers serve another function, meaning they're attending as part of the high school preschool program for our big kids, or they're, um, attending the integrated preschool program. So their attendance is critical in the actual success of the program, which is why it was necessary. So it may be a convenience for some, some are on a waiting list. But if, if those that are serving that function aren't showing up, then it would be an opportunity to open up that spot for others because we need, we need our preschoolers there so that, as I said, the program can be successful for all.
Perfect. That's 100% where I was going with that question.
Okay.
So, um, good. That's what I was hoping for, so, great. I have no questions. Any? Mr. Bea Johnson, any on the Ryan?
Um, I was just reading the preschool, preschool section, sorry, really quick. I don't think so. Um, no.
My one comment was, and I know this will be true for all of the, uh, handbooks, but I appreciate the links, um, under the search and seizure, where families can reference, uh, you know, that this isn't just kind of some arbitrary rule that was made up in Tewksbury.
Right.
So I appreciate those links. Thank you. Whenever that can happen.
I think it's helpful. Do you want to vote on them one at a time? Up to you, Madam Chair.
Sure, yeah. Are you guys comfortable? We'll vote one at a time.
Madam Chair, next question. And I was going to save it to the end only because I was going to let them all, I didn't realize we were going to take them individually. Just curious if we could go through the process, maybe? Or maybe, um, Ms. McDermott or Ms. Teri O'Regan can explain the process that the principals go through to look at the handbooks really quick so that we're clear on consistency and?
They absolutely all work together to keep consistent language. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, just what the, what the process looks like. So if, uh, you know, someone's looking tonight, watching tonight, and we're approving each of these individually, kind of what has happened up to this point?
Yeah, I think each time an item comes up, like we might get a health update, a health update is sent out to all of the principals. They meet together to talk about how that will affect their handbook policies, and they design it together.
And I would say then we vet it through our lead nurse, who then makes those necessary corrections, says, please make this consistent in every handbook. Unless it doesn't pertain specifically to, for example, a pregnant student at school.
There are minor adjustments.
So they may drop that piece. But as Ms. Bosworth intimated, the principals also created a subcommittee around consistency and clarity around search and seizure and that investigatory process at each school. So they did collaborate, vetted through us, we, you know, worked it. And then it's consistent in every handbook. I think what we're potentially even getting to someday is a handbook where everything is consistent, however, what's specific to only that school. And that's a work in progress every year. Just really proud of the team for doing this. It is a big lift, and then if people see edits or typos, and keeping in mind, and I'll say this at the end again, this is a fluid process. Things change.
It's a living document.
It is. And as things change through the year, you generally end with giving me the authority to bring any changes to you, but allow them to, to make them. So, does that help?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. So if it pleases the board to make a motion to approve the K through four handbook?
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So the K through four handbook is approved. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Excellent. So at this point, I'd like to welcome that, if you notice, they even look quite a bit alike, don't they? Not Ms. McGinnis and Mr. Weir, but the covers of their handbook. The Ryan, the Ryan and Win Middle School try to be very consistent with the approach to their handbook as technically five through eight, while it's five through six is elementary. You know, they all, they serve that, um, middle school age. So we have our principals Judy McGinnis and John Weir with us tonight. I'll let them review their bullet points a little bit. You have those memos in front of you.
Well, yeah, I'll go ahead. I, we didn't have a, a major shift in our handbook. We had done this several years ago and aligned almost word for word with the Win Middle School, which had already aligned itself to TMHS. So again, it's just those small tweaks and making sure that we have something that's developmentally appropriate. You can see that throughout the document. There are, you know, everything that you've seen with the K to four. We have an updated calendar chain of events. I'm not going to read all that. I mean, that chain of command, you get that. Clubs change from year to year for us, so I try to reflect what we have. And as already mentioned, we updated search and seizure language. I would also like to say, I think the difference, and we were just chatting, um, previously about this, is we have different cell phone approaches. And again, I think they really hit the needs of the students for the ages that we have. And I would say to the Ryan School students, keep up the good work. They've done a really nice job. And I know the transition has gone well for the Win as well, so I think you have more changes.
Sure, yep. So we just had some of the basic updates with dates and, uh, the school calendar chain of communication. We did add under progress reports, there's a great feature in Aspen where, uh, parents can enter a threshold grade. And if it, if a student's grade falls below a certain threshold, they get a notification. We just put that in there to notify them of that feature because it's something that, when we tell them about it, a lot of people, oh, I can, that's great. Now I can, I can set that. So we, we thought that would be a good thing to add. We will update the homework policy in the sense of what the committee's going to recommend for the new homework policy. Search and seizure update, tardiness. We used to have, um, after multiple tardies, uh, we said a possible consequence was suspension. We haven't really used that, but it was in there, the writing. With new suspension laws and things, that would not be something that we would ever suspend for. We'd be other approaches. We would work with parent guardian more closely to solve that issue. Health services updated, um, from the recommendations from nurses and appropriate use of electronic devices. We did add, uh, you know, the Yonder is a pilot. We'll be looking at, um, whether or not we'll be continuing with that next year. But we did want to add just to that part of it that, um, how phones are stored during the day would be at the discretion of the principal. And that would be something, though, that we would decide here too, as well, so.
Madam Chair, I'll also note, um, in the memo for the Ryan, we'll also include those updates to health services information, which will be in the handbook, just may not be on the memo right now. Yep.
Yeah. I'll update the memo with a new memo. Thank you. Any questions, comments on five through eight?
Um, just a question, um, because you brought it up on the Yonder pouches. I know it's a pilot. Are we going to get kind of an outbrief of the pilot and what we think next steps are and?
I believe in the July meeting, we're going to, uh, we're going to do a presentation on that.
Okay, great. And then that will have kind of next steps for next year? And if there's updates that are, you kind of made it so that it can be at your discretion?
It's kind of general here, uh, depending on that meeting. If there's something that we agree should kind of be in, uh, be something that would go before you.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I think it's good that you kept it vague, just so you're not pigeonholed into one system or whatever.
Are you all set, Mrs. Anderson?
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
Mr. Moncada, anything?
Yeah, I'm all set.
All set. Mr. Russo?
No, I have no further questions. Thank you.
And Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
None at this time.
My only question, um, on health services.
Yeah.
Where, um, the crossout is this information will be mailed home individually to parent guardians regarding screenings. Is that because they, you no longer actually mail them? Or is that a change where there won't be notification? I assume it's just that it's not?
I think it's just, I think they'll be notified. I'm just not sure what the process is.
The logistics is that it won't be mailed any longer.
Yeah. Well, I will check into that. I mean, there will be a process.
Because I assume, I mean, they'll probably email or?
Yeah, I think it's, that's the difference, is email as opposed to paper mail.
Okay. Um, no, that was my only question. I, I liked the language very much that you used for the cell phones. And I think it was, I like the fact that there's kind of some accountability that you're allowed to make on your own, respective to your buildings. So I do appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Anybody like to make a motion for the, the two Ryan and Win grades five through eight handbooks?
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, the handbooks as presented.
I'll second.
So a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Anderson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Enjoy the rest of the week at school.
Okay, and last but not least, if we can invite Mr. Andrew Long, Principal of Tewksbury Memorial High School. While his memo may look a little different in, uh, format, very similarly, you're going to see many of the same updates. So, um, Mr. Long, if you want to highlight some of those?
Yeah, mine, there's a few more substantive changes in, in the high school one. I have to thank Michelle Dick and Sean O'Leary for all their assistance in this. We've been keeping a running sort of tab all year long about things that need to be addressed. I did include the link with the draft in there, so some of the, if you have your computer on, you might be easier to follow with the draft unless you printed it. But, um, I'll just highlight some of the big ones, and if you have specific questions, you can ask me. But, um, we updated our eligibility requirements. What was on there before was, um, had been there a long time and was, I think, even a carryover from the block schedule. So we updated it, um, again, very consistent with other schools in the Merrimack Valley. Even Mr. Druin also, um, you know, weighed in on this and did some research. So, um, basically, if you're failing two courses in a quarter, you're ineligible until the following quarter. We've also included the attendance, so an N. If you get no, no credit due to, uh, poor attendance, meaning if you've passed your courses but you've exceeded the allotted, um, attendance days missed, then you lose credit, and that actually counts as a, as a failing course. If you'd prefer to ask me questions as we go, feel free to interrupt me, by the way, too.
Any questions thus far?
No.
Oh, nope.
Nope?
Do you want to wait till the end?
I'll wait to the end.
Okay, I'll wait to the end, too.
Sure, okay. Uh, school functions, we added, um, senior prom guests. We, um, I know Mr. O'Leary has a little bit more institutional knowledge than I have in this building, and, um, they used to have only junior prom. Our senior prom have guests from outside of school. So we're going to keep it that way just, um, moving forward, that seniors, um, will have a chance to bring outside guests, where juniors will not. We also added in there, and you'll see it on, it's on page two as well, but we added a, uh, consistent attendance leading up to the event. So you don't, people aren't just showing up for those days just to go to a certain thing. They have to have sort of that consistent, um, attendance leading up to that event. One of the things we are focusing on is, is attendance this year. Both tardiness and, um, you know, school and class attendance. The DESI has changed the accountability from 5% to 20% next year, so it's going to affect everyone. This especially affects the high school. That 20% includes excused and unexcused absences. So if kids miss more than 18 days, regardless if they're excused or unexcused, they're considered chronically absent. So we, we, um, changed that, and this is actually on page two as well. Or just before I go to page two. Grade point average on page 21 be updated to include seniors. We calculate their GPA after third quarter to be at the largest sort of window possible to make sure that those GPAs are as accurate as possible when they determine class rank and valedictorian, salutatorian, and class marshal. Again, the attendance policy, since it is changing, the accountability is going up so much. We, we're trying to reflect that as well. We had 18 absences, which are basically considered unexcused absences. We've reduced it to 16, um, that which includes excused or unexcused, again, to be consistent with DESI. We also initiated, um, a appeal process in there that'll be incumbent on students and their families to initiate that process. If there are extenuating circumstances, you know, we gladly hear those arguments and, um, restore credit if necessary. Again, the classification of absences, we included all those excused and unexcused as part of the overall, um, number of absences. That's on pages 24 and 25. We changed, again, this is a, you know, was way too long. We had in there, this is on page 29, that if a student misses 20 minutes of a class, again, this is based on the block scheduling, we reduced that to 10 minutes of a class, and it'll be considered an absence from the class. Also, this is where you see that same, um, message that we had on the, on page 16, which was students must maintain consistent, consistent attendance for at least two weeks preceding events or activities for which they wish to attend or be eligible for. Just trying to keep that consistent there. Course recommendations, overrides and changes. We said at the end of quarter one, so generally what happens is at the end of quarter one, if kids aren't getting grades that, um, they're happy with, there's a big, um, push to go to guidance and say, I want to, I want to, you know, go from an honors course to a CP or an AP to a, an honors course. We're trying to promote them, sort of stick it out a little bit, learn a little perseverance, develop a little grit, and stick with those choices they made and not just switch, um, based on a, a grade in their course. The health screenings, I didn't include it on your change memo, but I did, uh, update it. It was in there already. I actually added it back in November when, went into effect. But I did change the, um, um, to be consistent with all the other handbooks. Food services on page 36. Since we have free lunches now in the state, we added a free, healthy school lunch, and then that students will pay additional, um, they will pay for any additional meal after that because we do have some big kids that, um, eat a lot. So we had to update that a little bit. Student parking privileges, this is a big one. There are no more assigned student parking spaces. Student parking will be on a first-come, first-served basis in designated student parking areas. I've had a few conversations already with some kids and already, oh, oh, I got to get up earlier and get here if I want to get a good spot. So this benefits the kids that are here on time, to get a closer spot to school. The ones that are later, um, you know, if you come later, then you're going to risk being late. So, uh, this is a, also sort of a fact of life, right? If you go to a concert, you get there early, you get a good parking spot. So it's a, it's a life lesson as well. We've had some issues with, we spent a lot of time, uh, with our security guys and our school resource officer checking parking tags, so we added failure to display a parking tag could result in further school-based consequences. Again, we always warn them, of course. Cell phones, page 42 in the handbook. Again, we sort of added some things here that technology's constantly changing. So we wanted to make sure we covered that. We added students are required to store their cell phones in a designated area for the entirety of the class. We want to build on the momentum at the Win with the Yonder pouches and, um, so we, we do want to more adhere to, um, you know, not having the kids use their phone during class. I've talked to a number of principals in the Merrimack Valley. I know one high school said they've been very successful that if kids are in the hallway during class with a phone, then that's when they get a consequence. So to me, it's an easier rule to enforce for teachers as well. If, hey, can I go to the bathroom? Yep, make sure your phone's here, go. Because we've had some, some issues with, hey, meet me in the bathroom, meet me here, let's go get a snack, like those kinds of things. So we're trying to, uh, put the kibosh on that. Our detention policy, page 43, failure to attend and serve detentions in a timely manner. Our detention policy, page 43, failure to attend and serve detentions in a timely manner. Sometimes those, you know, detentions are assigned, it takes them three, four weeks to complete, which we're trying to just gain a little bit more compliance. We've also added Saturday detentions as some alternative remedies to suspension and other things. We updated our list of tobacco things, since, again, constantly changing with technology. So we just updated some of those definitions. Let's see. We did also include the search and investigatory question section as well. And then we added, excuse me, page 52, a tobacco policy there as well. So those are sort of the highlights. Excuse me, I'll take any questions now if you, if you have them.
Thank you. Mr. Moncada, anything for you?
If we get those detectors in the bathrooms.
Babe detectors?
Yeah. Is there anything that, if they're like, just like when you're on an airplane, if you disable it or do anything to them? Is there any, is that covered in here at all?
If we don't have any presently, I did contact a company, it was about $10,000 to install. They are wireless, they run on Bluetooth and things like that, so unfortunately, we didn't have the money. But that's always a possibility. I will, I did reach out to Ms. Bastieri to see if she had any grant money, that any sort of health grants or anything like that could apply, but I never heard back, so I'll keep on that.
But if they're, but if there's like, they're tampered with, let's, I know we don't have them.
Right.
If we did, and they were tampered with, and, you know, devices tampered with, would that somehow be covered?
Absolutely, yeah.
What's, okay.
I would, I would say that it would be in one of the level infractions.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
A question on the attendance policy, you said there was a DESI update to the guideline, so it.
The accountability, yeah.
Yeah, so is that across all schools, and have we updated those in the other handbooks?
It's just a little different at the high school because of the attachment of attendance to credit. But yes, accountability and chronic absenteeism is a major priority, not only for the state of Massachusetts but for the country. I think what's important is that students come into the school year knowing, and that that will be, you know, principal's assemblies, which is the grade levels. These changes are significant and real, and here's why.
Since the pandemic too, right?
Yeah.
Anybody sneezed, "Oh, I got to sit out for five days and wait to get tested," right? So that was, it sort of created a culture that it's taken us a long time to get over. DESI, we just got a notification yesterday, DESI's looking into teacher attendance as well, like they're keeping data on that.
All staff.
So it's, it's, right, all staff. So it's a huge issue, not only in Massachusetts but nationwide, and again, it's sort of a hangover of the pandemic.
Okay. I just, I guess my question was, you updated it here, does similar updates need to happen in the other handbooks because of the?
I think the information to parents about what chronic absenteeism is. And we always share those codes of what, you know, absence confirmed, absence excused, absence unexcused. I guess I would ask a question, if I may, Madam Chair, through you, is, and you talked about this, Mr. Long, and that was the appeal process for extenuating circumstances. Would that be something we want to note?
It is in the handbook.
Okay, I didn't see the appeal process, I'm sorry.
It's on, it's on page 24.
Okay, thank you, then.
Yep.
Scratch your question.
Yeah, it says, you know, in writing by the parent or guardian or student, and then it'll be presented to principal or designee specifically for that. But again, that has to be initiated by the student or parent.
And then I want to.
We actually developed a form this year.
Okay.
To do that, so we can have those on hand.
I think it's important to note that while there may be an appeal process for loss of something here, there's still an impact to our accountability. So it has to be tracked, maintained, and unfortunately, it impacts the school and/or the whole district if we have significant chronic absenteeism.
I can tell you, looking at other handbooks in the Merrimack Valley, two high schools come to mind that have six per semester, so theirs is 12. So, and that's, those are just two examples. I think I saw another one that's even more stringent than that. So, you know, 18 absences is chronically absent, so we want to just keep it just under that threshold with the appeal process, you know, for those extenuating circumstances.
Thank you. Mr. Russo.
So, and you kind of just answered it there, Mr. Long, so I guess I do generally have just a little concern about this, because.
The attendance?
Attendance, yeah, I'm going to focus on that. So, you know, excused absences are college visits for juniors and maybe some seniors, right? And I know just from my own personal experience, you know, when you call in to, you know, report that your student's going to be absent for whatever reason, you know, generally, you'll get an email back saying, you know, "Please submit whatever documentation so we can excuse the absence." So other than the appeal process, is that really the only rationale then, to now get your absence excused, to just have that appeal process if you're, because?
No, even, but excused absences wouldn't?
Well, this is saying excused or excuse.
Right.
So, so if you have a student that goes to visit five colleges or six colleges over the course of the year, you are then late to a class by 12 minutes, twice over the course of a semester, now that's two absences, two more absences for that particular class. Then the student actually, let's just say they actually do get sick over the course of the winter, you're always at 16. So what I'm trying to, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what's the rationale for making the change from 18 and not to 16 and 8? Other than the fact that maybe the other MVC schools are doing that in the sense of, and again, to be fair, I haven't seen those in the handbook, because maybe. Just unexcused, I don't know.
So I can tell you, and this is, that I've gotten anecdotally from staff members, is students can see, they can go on Aspen, they can see their attendance, so if they are, you know, they have gotten comments that, "Oh, I can miss a couple more classes," or, "Oh, I got this class first block, this is, I can come in late." So they do track it, which is concerning, so we're trying to curb that a little bit. But, yeah, I mean, we're trying to keep it under that 10% threshold, so I get what you're saying, that, and we know too, right, if kids are sick, you're not going to bring them to the doctor every single time, we know that. But the, yeah, it's more about them being able to track their absences, keeping them in class, keeping them, you know, making them want to come to school too. We have to do that, you know, engage them as well to want to come to school. I think the parking is going to help too, that first come, first served. I've already gotten some feedback from some kids that they were glad to hear that.
So, Mr. Long, so the incentive then, from going from 20 minutes being late to a class versus 10 minutes? So if I'm a student and I am late because I'm meeting with the teacher that I previously had a block with, for whatever reason, because.
You get a pass.
Yeah, usually you get a pass.
But it's, we're talking about excused versus unexcused, so is that considered excused, and is that okay? I'm trying to understand the rationale of that.
That would, that wouldn't be marked as an absence, a class absence, that would be an excused. So the teacher wouldn't mark it as that, if they, generally, the teachers call each other and say, yeah.
Guidance counselor or whoever. So then, if now, if I don't have that pass and I'm 12 minutes late, what's the incentive for me to then go to that class?
Right, well, again, the idea that, so the idea was, I think they had 84-minute classes before, so it was 20 minutes was sort of.
Yeah, and now it's dropped down.
Some of the things, you know, some of this is to curb the sort of walking around kind of thing, that, you know, kids are on the third floor, and suddenly we find them on the first floor, they're by the vending machines, that kind of stuff. So a lot of that is to curb that. The, you know, the, the beginning of the day is a little different than that. But again, you know, that's also, it's a, with the rotating schedule, it doesn't affect the same class all the time, so there is a variation there. So it's not always going to be the same class. If they're chronically late in the morning, it's, you know, they have a 1 in 7 chance of being the same day, right? So it takes a while for them to get there, if they're, if they're always late in the morning.
I guess, and I'll end it here, maybe, from my perspective is, as far as this tardiness to class goes, to me, and I appreciate the response, Mr. Long, but there's no distinction between excused versus unexcused, whereas up above in the attendance policy, there is. So, again, I just think that maybe that just needs to be clarified a little differently. Especially, like you said, if a student has had a nurse, for, you know, for whatever reason, a guidance, a counselor appointment, a meeting with a teacher from a previous block, or because they were absent on a previous day, I just, I think that that should just be clarified, that those are not to be considered.
The tardiness?
The tard, that would be the tardiness, please.
And just before I hand over to Mr. Beatty-Johny Smith to piggyback on that, since you're already on that topic, have you, did you, as a team, consider with the tardiness, considering maybe the frequency as being more of an issue than the actual timing? So I understand what you're saying, you're trying to deter people from kind of lingering in the hallway. I would imagine that the students that are lingering in the hallway are chronically lingering in the hallway.
Two things, so usually, if they're marked late, right, if they come late to class, like, let's say they come at 7:45, right? They missed, that would be considered a tardy. So, and then they have, we have a policy of five Ts equals one class absent. So, you know, this, I think the spirit of this is more, and maybe it needs to be clarified to your point, that, you know, "Hey, can I go to the bathroom?", kids roll in 15 minutes later.
Sure.
Then that counts as a class absence.
Yeah.
As opposed to the beginning of the day kind of thing, where we have a policy of five Ts equals one class absence. So I think, to your point, we can clarify the language a little bit more on that to specify that.
Okay, and then I have one other question too about the DESI requirement. So I understand what you're saying in terms of the timing, being, meeting DESI, but in terms of the using this N for the no credit, is that a DESI requirement? Or is that a Tewksbury decision?
I believe that's a Tewksbury, that's, it's been in our handbook. It just hasn't, my understanding, hasn't been enforced the last few years.
It's just, it's hard to, it's hard to swallow a little bit. If you have a student who's doing well in a class, A-level student, and for whatever reason, maybe there's some of the reasons Mr. Russo threw out there, and meets that threshold of numbers for absenteeism, to then say that that student's not going to get credit for the class?
So that's what, and we just sent out some letters today, so we have some kids that, we have sort of a graduated schedule of that. So kids that have missed, you know, 19 or more classes, which is about 15%, about 15 or 16% of their overall class, right? Because with the waterfall schedule, they meet about 127 times a year. So they miss 19 classes in a year, they're in jeopardy of losing credit, so due to attendance. So a couple of things, so we, you know, we have a graduated, so between 19 and 24, something like that, they would have to do one session of summer school to make up the time and to restore the credit. We did offer that to seniors earlier this year, because they needed it, because they weren't going to have the chance to do it in summer school. So that's, that's one thing.
And that these are all students that aren't performing well, or they did perform well, but just met that threshold?
And again, these, so failures is different than attendance, but this is why we also, in our attendance policy, talked about, the same way that's in our suspension policy, like if you're absent for, you know, if you're suspended for two days, you have two days to make up the work plus one. That's, that's generally what happens. And I think that's some of the things that are happening with our absences. Kids miss 30, 40 days, and then, you know, how are they getting Bs? That's something we have to work on as a faculty. But it also has to do with our, you know, gaining the credit. Like, you're out five days, you've got five days plus one to get that stuff back in and make up, make up that credit, so.
Madam Chair.
Again, that happened all the time as a teacher, that I would get at the very end, especially the end of the marking period, "Hey, can I do some extra credit?", like, "Well, you didn't do the regular credit, why would I give you extra credit?"
So I just want to make note, the high school has always had, and it's more robust now because we're back and it's lively, credit recovery for both attendance and their score. So the summer school for the high school is based on both. And sometimes it's making up for missed time if they weren't able to do that in the term or the semester or the whole year. I do want to make note, after reading this further, just like digesting it myself again, it's five in a term. And remember what Mr. Long just said, that when they meet only 120 times in a whole year, now 20 times, or maybe 10 in a semester, or 20 in a year, is a considerable amount of time out of the class. And if that is not made up, and I would assume, only because I know from the past, there's an appeal process to this too.
Right.
If, for example, it's extenuating circumstances that's causing that, but the kiddo is keeping up with everything or making up. And quite honestly, you, our credit recovery for that, you have to, I mean, it's at, I think 70, it's passing. Or 60, and it's making up to boost the grade. Where credit recovery for failing is to get them over the failing mark. So, so it's a benefit and possibly a curse for some. I know that we've all had students who are pulling an easy B and not ever attending, or attending, having chronic absenteeism. And we need to, you know, there's two double-edged sword there. Well, you're very bright, you're able to do this, but, you know, success in life means showing up too, so how do we bump them up?
So this, this appeal process is applicable to unexcused and excused in all of these scenarios?
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. And then, Mrs. Beatty-Johny Smith, I'll hand over to you.
I also was the supervisor of attendance for Tewksbury for seven years or so. And so there's a lot of, you know, "I have a doctor's note, therefore I don't have to go to school." And it's super frustrating that, and that's not, you know, that's not how life works. Unfortunately, you and I have to go to work when we're not feeling well, things like that. And again, there's, we know the pandemic sort of slowed that down a little bit, and we have to get back on track. So, you know, some of this takes that out of the equation, again, with the appeal process there to look into extenuating circumstances.
Okay, Mrs. Beatty-Johny Smith.
I have two questions and then maybe a comment. Can you tell me what you mean by, what it means by saying consistent attendance for the two weeks before an event, and how that would be maintained? There's really not a clarification there of what consistent means?
So, again, just in talking to Mrs. Dick and Mr. O'Leary, we had noticed that some kids, you know, during, whether it could be athletic season, could be drama performance, that, you know, attendance is non-existent until, "Uh-oh, this is coming up," and then all of a sudden. So the idea here is to incentivize it, to make it, you know, the kids want to come throughout the term instead of just around an event like that. So it's, you know, not like the day before and the day of, but, you know, it's a carrot to be consistently coming to school and not just show up on those kinds of days.
Yeah, and this is part of the comment that I wanted to make, it's just, there seems to be a lot in here that's open to interpretation and enforcement, depending on who the person is, or the teacher, or the administrator who's dealing with that student. And I feel like, you know, you might have one student who has this person, who they can walk in 12 minutes instead of 10 minutes late, and the teacher's like, "Ah, whatever, it's 12 minutes." Whereas another one would be like 10 minutes and 5 seconds, and you're, here's your, your tardy. Taking away the morning, which is much different, because you're walking through that front door, and you need to get whatever it is that you get when you walk through the front door in high school. All of the rest of these areas have a lot of, open to interpretation for whomever is, is reading that. And it just seems like it might lead to a problem that could be seen as inequitable if certain students are getting certain things versus others are not. So that was just a general comment, and maybe that's more something to kind of embed in culture, being consistent across whoever the administrators are when delivering whatever regulations.
It's, and that's, we have had these conversations with our faculty as well, that, you know, some people, you know, take attendance, as soon as the bell rings, boom, attendance. Other people, "Oh, get in here," you know, there were stragglers, sort of, you know, piling in after the bell, that kind of thing. So we have said, you know, we have to be consistent with that. So it is something that we are trying to do.
Safety as well.
Okay, and then my last one is on the search and seizure. Can you just explain why it's in two different places?
So I fixed that, I did, so I did, page 49, it's, I restored it. If you look at the online version, I restored that, and then I put it on page 57.
Okay, yeah, the one I have still has it on 58, I'll look at the link.
Well, and what we did, because we did talk about this one today, is it's under S, search and seizure in every handbook, so parents won't be confused in finding it under conduct.
Okay. I'll have to look at it.
Yeah, conducting a search. So that it, yeah, I mean, these are pretty consistent, and some of these, parents should find it in the same place.
One last thought as well, the parking. Is there any consider, I would imagine there'll be consideration for people who have a medical concern or a medical issue that...
That's always taken into consideration. Mr. Leary is usually in charge of that, but that's always taken into consideration.
Great. And then the messaging out, I think, having had, we all have kids throughout the district, if you have a student in one school and another, this is, this is very different than what you would expect at the Wynn or the Ryan or, you know, elementary. So I know this year...
The younger grades, though, again, having done the supervisor of attendance thing, like, there are, you know, CRAs you can file, there are failure descends, so there are different, like, you wouldn't file a CRA, you can't file a CRA on anybody that's over 16.
Right.
Right? Failure descends are generally for the little kids.
Yeah.
So this, we don't have a lot of teeth in the upper grades, and that's one of the reasons that we sort of took this approach.
Yeah, and I, I, thank you for taking so much time with us because I think we all needed it. But I think just the messaging for families, so if you've got two students in school, you're, you're not looking at the same thing.
Right.
And how to get that information to high school parents, I don't know how you get any information to high school parents, because I don't know any, you know, it must be really hard. Because I think a lot of times, high school parents don't hear things until it's a problem, and then they go looking for the answers.
And I'm happy to, like, amend some of the things, like the consistent, like, I understand your point on that one, that it's very subjective. And if there's some wording that needs to be tweaked, I'm happy to look at that.
Madam Chair, if I don't, if I may, I think it would also be wonderful if Mr. Long includes his student advisory next year in reviewing how these changes are feeling to students because, I mean, they're really the, the end user, if you will, and the ones that are dealing with it probably way before their parents know about it. So maybe the advisory can give feedback and input.
The summer letter will go out with any sort of changes that are approved. We are going to have beginning-of-the-year assemblies for every grade to go over certain things as well. So any, any changes that are made, we generally do that anyway.
Great.
But just to reiterate that, and then, to your point, send it home to families as well.
Yeah, no, having any feedback from the kids would be great. Any other last-minute thoughts?
No, thank you.
I do really appreciate the time you took with us. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
At this time, any thoughts on the handbook, 9 through 12? Entertained motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the handbook for grades 9 through 12.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, motion by Mrs. Anderson, a second by Mr. Russo. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passed unanimously. And then again, as we have in the past, we have asked Mrs. Terry O'Regan to kind of be the overseer of these handbooks, and should any changes occur, we have voted in the past to give her the authority to, to make those changes with the principals, and then update us and notify us as soon as she could at the next meeting. Are people agreeable to that? If so, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to allow Ms. O'Regan to be able to make changes as she sees fit for the district alongside with the principals, and just update us accordingly throughout the year if necessary changes are, are made.
A second. So a motion by Mr. Russo, a second by Mrs. B. Joni Smith, to give Mrs. Terry O'Regan the authority for updates in the handbooks throughout the year with follow-up updates to the committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you guys for entertaining us.
Thanks for hanging in there.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, this brings us to Citizens Forum. Seeing nobody here tonight with us.
That's so sad.
I know.
Not really.
Moving on to the approval of minutes with our clerk.
Sure. So motion to approve the minutes from the May 22, 2024 meeting.
A second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Moncada, second by Mrs. Anderson. Roll call, vote. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. B. Joni Smith?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well for unanimous vote of the approval of minutes. And submission of payrolls.
I move the school department payroll for the period, pay period, excuse me, period ending, May 23, 2024, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,646,878.11.
A second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Moncada, second by Mrs. Anderson, to approve and certify the payroll period ending May 23, 2024, in the amount of $1,646,878.11. Roll call, vote. How do you vote, Mrs. B. Joni Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Moncada?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well for unanimous vote.
And then we have a second one. I move the school department payroll for the period ending June 6, 2024, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,709,395.99.
A second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Moncada, second by Mrs. Anderson, to approve and certify the payroll period ending June 6, 2024, a total amount of $1,709,395.99. Mrs. B. Joni Smith, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well for unanimous vote. And now for our superintendent's staff report. Mrs. Terry O'Regan, I'll start with you.
Please, Madam Chair. Last Thursday, June 6, was the final Dally Collaboratives Board of Directors meeting. I've included their end-of-year newsletter in your side pocket, just outing some of the successes and plans for the future of the Valley. I'll have their final quarter budget review for the 23, 24 year-end in September, because you know they're open all summer as well, and they'll have their final budget, as I said, in spending. So last Friday, June 7, also in your packet, was our 89th Tewksbury Memorial High School commencement. Thank you for those of you that attended, or, and wanted to attend, for the graduating class of 2024. I'm so proud of our graduates. I know you heard it already, but we had 191 graduates. If you didn't hear, 135, 71% of the senior class graduated with academic excellence. I do want to thank TMHS administration, Mr. Long, and all of them for this colossally successful event, and for all the faculty and staff that assisted and attended, especially the two class advisors, Ms. Kelsey Ring and Ms. Julia Hammers. And then a special thank you has to go to Ms. Kelly Mercier. She works tirelessly all year. She's probably already started the class of 2025's commencement to pull off an, an event of this importance. Yesterday, the assistant superintendent and I also attended another colossal annual event at the other end of the school age, and this is the Heathbrook Annual First Grade Flag Day Celebration. It was so simply moving and spectacular. The students dawned all of their red, white, and blue, sang many songs about our flag, our country's freedom, and not a dry eye was in the room when they sang, "I'm so proud to be an American." So thank you to the Heathbrook first grade staff and students, and bravo to all of you. In your consent agenda, you'll see a long list of reappointments for next year. This list includes our non-teaching 10-month staff appointments, some district-level stipended positions, and our Appendix B appointments at each of the schools, including academic Appendix B positions, club advisors and athletic coaches. With your approval, after our updates of the consent agenda, these appointments will be official for the 24, 25 school year. Earlier this week, the DECA advisor, Mr. Sullivan, and senior members of the DECA club were recognized and honored at Dana Faber for helping to tip those scales and raise over $1 million in the name and spirit of Tewksbury Memorial High School alum, Megan McCarthy, in her belief in miracles and the hopes to cure cancer. Our last district newsletter for the school year will go out this Friday, and we'll link many of the end-of-year information that we've talked about tonight and much more, especially updates to our school calendar, even though we're going to talk about that a little bit later, our summer activity opportunities, and then our new summer activities and informational link for families that advertises new offerings through the town of Tewksbury's Rec Department. This Friday is our last day of school for the 2023, 2024 school year for students, teachers, and our 10-month staff. It's an early release day for students and staff, and I want to wish all of them an amazing summer break. But people do often ask if we are closed, too, for the summer. And no, the central office and our schools are open all summer. Administrators will, and, and our school secretaries will take some very needed summer vacation, but people should know they're able to contact us throughout the summer, either at the school or central office as needed. Finally, tonight, we had the opportunity to say goodbye to those who have served the district for many years. Yet, another key member of our team will be saying goodbye to us in just a couple of weeks. While not retiring, she is moving on, and that is Ms. Lori McDermott, our assistant superintendent. So Lori, I laid awake last night thinking, what can I say at tonight's meeting to truly capture how I feel about you as an amazing and trusted working partner, as an amazing assistant superintendent? And then it dawned on me, it rushed back like a memory in June of 2022. And if you remember, Madam Chair, members of the committee, at that time, I was appointed superintendent, I did not have an assistant superintendent, and I posted this position very late in a school year. And I have to tell you, I was very concerned that we would not find a highly qualified and capable, I call her my work partner, but assistant superintendent to the district. And as I drove to the senior prom, I received a phone call, and I waited till I got to the parking lot and I called that person back. And that person was a fellow Merrimack Valley superintendent who called me to be a reference for Ms. McDermott. Not only did he call me that night, another Merrimack Valley superintendent called me that night to just rave about one of the candidates, an applicant, that at that time we hadn't scheduled for all of our interviews. We posted the position late in June, as I said. To say the least, I was worried. But then that week, again, I received two phone calls from Merrimack Valley assistant superintendents to rave about Ms. McDermott, and another Merrimack Valley superintendent. And these are some of the things they said about you, Lori. She's amazing, she's bright, she knows curriculum and good teaching, she always puts students first, her work ethic, and this one was underlined, underlined, underlined by every single person, is stellar, she's funny, she'd make a great partner with you, Brenda, and for Tewksbury. Trust me, you'll love her. These were the superintendents and assistant superintendents that know me both very well and the Tewksbury Public School needs, goals, and some of the joys and challenges we had in front of us. They not only convinced me, you've convinced me. And I think I told you within the first two months of working together, I don't know that I've ever felt this such full confidence in a trusted work partner as I felt immediately with Lori working with us. You convinced the entire hiring committee that you are our first choice, and you have lived up to every single thing said about you that June 2022, and everything that I've hoped for and even more. So you have simply done amazing work for our district, work that will live on and continue. I thank you, I'll miss you dearly. It's not over yet, we still have a meeting tonight and a couple of more weeks, and I will cherish every single last minute of that work with you. Thank you so much. I have a little something that I will, I will share as well. And you promised to keep it light. I did keep that light. That light? But that concludes my updates for tonight, Madam Chair and the committee.
Thank you. Any comments? Mr. Moncada?
Um, no, other than, it's, you know, sad that you're going, and I've never, I've not heard anything but great things about you and the work you've done here, so.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
Yeah, I apologize, I just have hoped for just a minute at the beginning, but I, we haven't worked together for very long, but I, the time that I was able to spend with you was valuable. Very quickly, I realized how important you held your position for the district and for the kids in our community, and for the staff in our community, and I think we've heard it time and time again how much you've brought to the, the district for the short time you were here, so.
Thank you.
I very much appreciate you.
Mr. Russo?
I have no questions or comments for your update. I'm going to reserve my comments till the end for Mrs. McDermott.
Mrs. B. Joni Smith?
Um, I, I think Rich and I both started around the time that we were going through that process. It was a kooky time.
It was a whirlwind.
And you were, you were just a breath of fresh air. It was such a, it seemed seamless when you came in. Appreciate all the work you've done, the effort to really wrap this community up and, and kind of give them a big hug.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you.
Again, I also don't have any questions for.
Okay. In terms of the update, I, the only thing I'd like to comment on is it was really, really refreshing to see the number of people in the Appendix B and returning staff that are returning, because as we know, those are, you know, extra, optional positions, and to see so many of our coaches and, you know, a lot of people continuing to give back to the students in that way. So it was nice to see the number of people there. And, I, I just, it makes me sad, I want to cry, because I really, really enjoyed working with you, but even more so, I am so proud of the work that you've done here, so proud of the work you've done. I think you intuitively was, were able to come into Tewksbury and just really see where some of our blind spots were, really capture the attention of different people, that you earn their trust, people do trust in you, your word is everything, and that has meant so much to me, to see that shine from you, and to see how much people appreciated you for just you being you, outside of not just your knowledge and understanding of, you know, teaching and learning and things like that. So I think, I hope that that continues to grow and build in this position, that you've created this kind of nice foundation for the next person to come into, and I really appreciate what you've done just with curriculum and how well you've worked with Mrs. Terry O'Regan, because it was a tough time. I think you were coming into it in a really, you know, we were coming out of COVID, there was, there were so many different factors going on. So I just really appreciate you a lot, and, you know, I know you're not going far, but you're not here, so.
Well, thank you. And the, the success that you are referencing wouldn't have been possible without everything that all of you did to support that, especially you and Dave and the whole leadership team. It's just, it's been amazing. I suppose I could head right into some notes I, I wrote just to thank all of you and the And I, I won't cry, even though Brenda almost made me, I won't. But it, it's, it's moving to hear all of the, the accolades that don't feel all that well-deserved because it's been such a brief little amount of time, and we haven't really had a chance to fully, but I wanted to extend, extend my sincere gratitude, truly, I mean, when I say, and I, I've said this over and over from the moment I got here, how, how welcomed I, I felt, and I have to reference Keith, even from Keith in his kind of relatively gruff way, and I remember thinking, hmm, but I, I felt it, you know, it was, it was a big, strong hug, and it was, it was a pride in, in, in the town that I, I didn't really know how it would play out, and it played out, I think, in the, in the most beautiful way possible. So that feeling of trust and support has remained constant each and every day, right up until right now. I remember talking to Brenda about what will it be like, you know, we made this decision pretty early, and we, we did that for the good of the district, you know, making sure that there would be time to get somebody, you know, good, and we, I kind of knew that there was some opportunity out there. So we didn't know, would people still buy into the work and, and stand behind us and really keep the district moving forward? And it's such a testament to the people here because they did, and, and they, they still are today. Yeah. I've learned so much here, having the opportunity to work alongside such a truly, truly hands-on, boots-on-the-ground superintendent, so visible and dedicated, your institutional knowledge, you know, you, you wear your heart on your sleeve, sometimes to your own detriment, but partnering, it's, it's just been such an incredible learning experience for me, partnering with Brenda, the teachers, the families, the entire leadership team. It's just been so positive. The collaboration and commitment to continuous improvement in this district is really, has made my time here so, so rewarding. The moment I got here, people were saying, can we do this? Can you help us with this? Like, they, they, I really feel like the, the community here, the teachers led the work. I was just alongside to, to support it. Very proud of what we have accomplished in the short time. I do wish it was more, but I have complete confidence that Tewksbury is going to continue to thrive in the future, and I'm looking forward to partnering with your new assistant superintendent moving forward. Superintendent moving forward. I also have to talk about the students really quick. I've been so impressed with the students and, and, you know, working alongside Brenda, we've had, she's really kind of led us into the buildings and made sure that we were out and about. That was something I really appreciated from, from the time that I got here. And whether we were walking through schools, visiting classrooms, holding our student-listening sessions, attending all of the award ceremonies, the plays, the concerts, and sporting events, you don't see high-level district administration at those things in all districts, so I was very appreciative of that opportunity, and I feel like it's another thing that I've learned from you, how, how important it is to support, you know, all areas of the district. But constantly met with positive attitudes from students, kindness from students, respect from students, time and time again, it just always stood out. And that's a true testament to the strength and character of this entire community. Tewksbury parents really have so, so much to be proud of. So I want to thank you all for your kind of support and partnership. It's really been an honor and a privilege to serve as Assistant Superintendent of Schools in this very special community. It really is very special. I tell everybody, Tewksbury has just been an amazing place. There's no doubt that I will carry with me the many lessons I've learned, the wonderful memories I've made here in Tewksbury, and really working with all of you, and even having you come on board, it's, it's really a special committee, and you'll always have a, a special place in my heart, so thank you.
Thank you. Any updates?
I do have to get back to. We have things to do. Yeah. I do want to say congratulations. I, I know, it's still a little emotional for me, because congratulations to the class of 2024. I was sad to miss the graduation ceremony, but I was actually at the same exact time at my own son's graduation ceremony, probably shedding my own tears, and at the Flag Day presentation, which was truly amazing. All I could see was my son and all of his friends, you know, in their first-grade phase, and, you know, you, it just, it goes by really fast, so all of the parents out there, take the time to really be present when you can, because it, it goes pretty quick. Okay, professional development, I have some good news. You know, that's been a little bit of a passion of, of mine and, and the curriculum team. We are planning for something a bit different next school year in terms of the half-day workshop days. So we've invited our very own Tewksbury teachers to submit proposals to facilitate a 10-hour professional development multipart series that would be building-based, and it would take place on the four half-day workshop days. We have asked the principals to have a little bit of flexibility for some district-wide people if that were to come up, and they've agreed to do that. I'm so happy to say that we have about 30 approved proposals from teachers. Again, a testament to the dedication of, of the teachers here. We are looking forward to some really great differentiated professional development. So proud of our teachers for taking advantage of this opportunity, because teachers often don't see themselves as teachers of adults, so it's really putting many of us outside of our comfort zone to put ourselves out there in front of our, our peers. So I'm so proud of them, and I have no doubt that it's going to be a huge success. I did open up the proposal, just to give you some ideas of the wide range of, of different things that, that we're going to be able to offer. Fostering resilient learners, strategies for creating a trauma-sensitive classroom, how to differentiate instruction in academically diverse classrooms, how to design tiered interventions for ELA that support the EL program, supporting English learners in the classroom, using data to build interventions in the classroom, I, you know, there's, there's 30 of them here. So I'm really excited for that, even though I'll have to check in with, with some people through text, but. A reminder that final report cards have been posted on Aspen on the last day, will be posted on Aspen on the last day of school, or for TMHS, after all the finals have been graded. If you aren't sure how to access your child's report card, please reach out to your child's school secretary. And I also wanted to let you know, we did put out a survey to elementary parents regarding the standards-based report card, as promised. Unfortunately, we only got 29 responses, those, that, and it was kind of, you know, a range of, you know, five people said this, three people said that, two people said that. So I'm hoping we can resend it in the, in the district, in the district newsletter. You know, in reading through the comments, I would, I, even though it wasn't like an overwhelmingly negative response to the questions, the comments were a lot about, let's go back to, to the, the grades, you know, I think it was more understandable for, for people, they, that's what they know. So I think maybe continue, continuing education. We're trying to match the next term, the next trimester term with the parent conference, so that teachers will be able to have the report card ready and go over it with families, so they kind of won't be left to their own devices to decipher it all. It is different. Some people feel like it's actually less information when we know that it's so much more, but that tells me that they don't understand it. And so, yeah, that's not helpful information if they can't understand it. So we did get some helpful feedback, I would just love to get some more than 29 people. So we'll resend it again and hope that, that we get some more info. We did also do a survey from teachers, and so that committee will continue on and will continue to make tweaks as needed.
I think with the high level of confidence our elementary teachers have shown.
Yeah.
From start to finish, will help inform parents moving forward, too. It was new for them as well, for some of them. So I think that's going to help give our parents necessary information as they start the school year.
And some of it, there, there were a lot of standards, right? We, there were a lot, especially in ELA, we really kind of put out anything that we could grade, we did, and, and we reported on it, which you don't necessarily have to do. So the teachers have been sharing that information, too. So Felicia Chenanovich will look at that with the steering committee and try to pare down some of those standards. So it's still comprehensive, but not so, so overwhelming, and might have, hold a little bit more meaning. So still a work in progress, which we expected.
Right. Okay. Any comments, thoughts? Does it be John Smith?
No, none, thank you.
Russo?
Just, just a point of clarity, so you mentioned that staff and teachers had submitted 30 proposals for professional development. So how are you, I'm assuming that's just differentiated based on either the grade band or the content area or the school building?
Yeah, so they're building-based.
Building-based, okay.
Building-based. So we made sure that we had kind of a range for each building.
Okay, okay. And all of, so all 30 of those are going to be corporate? Are you going to be, is someone going to be choosing from what?
Yeah, right now, it looks like 29 of them could potentially be approved. The next step is they will submit a syllabus to us.
Okay.
So they've already, you know, filled out a whole proposal explaining that how it's related to the district goals, what the product will be, you know, the name of the session, what we can, you know, just a rough, you know, brief explanation of what, what the session will entail. But now they'll need to submit the syllabus, and today we sent out templates for, for the syllabi, so that's the next step.
Want to talk a little bit about the survey that you were having some staff fill out to gauge.
Yes, so that was.
Interest at each building, too, for what potentially was offered.
That was the other thing we did. We, we had, I don't know, we had a, a small group of proposals, and so with that group, we sent out kind of an interest survey to say if this was, if these were the offerings, would you be interested? And if this has sparked your interest in submitting a proposal, please feel free to do so. And so we got a whole, whole group, more of proposals, and there was definitely interest. In fact, many of the teachers have responded, what if, what if I like two or three of these?
I agree.
And we had to say, well, for now, we want, you don't, you're not committed to this for the fall, but for now, we just want to know your, your top choice. So what's great about this is if it is successful, you can run it the following year, you know, and add, and, you know, things that were really popular, bring back, and maybe revise some others. So it, and it also really speaks to the, the feedback that we got from teachers in terms of looking for some voice and choice and some differentiation, and really tapping into the expertise we have in the building, and that was one of our goals, is to try to build up some leadership capacity amongst our staff.
That's excellent.
Spoiler alert, you'll see that on our evidence as building leadership.
Yeah, I appreciate that effort. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson?
Just a follow-on question. So is there maybe an opportunity, too, where instead of 10 hours over four half-days, you could do two, two half-days, five hours, one subject and another to try to get them into?
Yep, so we, yeah, we kind of vetted all of these. My initial thought was it would be more of a full-day opportunity. But through all of the meetings, we kind of landed on the half-day workshop days, because we felt like people might be more comfortable to start in their own buildings. We also wanted to give teachers, so when you're earning professional development, like contact hours, there's a benefit for teachers to bundle a group of 10, to get professional development points in one topic. That's why, and it just so happened that our calendar supports the four, two and a half-hours, so you get the 10 hours. So that was why there are many, you know, we could have done more of an ed camp, where you're 45 minutes here, 45. But I really wanted it to be meaningful and have some long-term impact in learning for the teachers that they could really use in the classroom, so, but yeah, there are many different versions that this could grow into. But that was why the 10.
Yeah.
So they could bundle them.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Malkata?
It, it sounds like then there's enough suggestions and opportunities that you weren't, not going to be repeating them? Like, there's enough.
So, yeah, for this year, for this year, oh yeah, there's, there's probably more than enough. Yeah. Yep. And then we did have in our back pocket that, you know, we, we could use our, many of our coaches, they, they submitted proposals as well, but we also could use our district administrators. I mean, if I was going to be here, probably would have offered one. We have a, a Assistant Principal who offered one our, our district directors could offer. So we, we kind of knew that we would be able to fill in the gaps.
Did I ask you already?
You did.
Yes, and I have no comments, no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And, Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Manager.
You.
A couple of brief updates on some.
Are you going to miss me?
I'll get to you.
Okay, just checking, just making sure.
You're our last project, we got going on. So the Win HVAC project is up and running, materials have been ordered for that. So that's going to be, I know they've been working third shift through this week, they'll go first shift, then we'll start to see some real progress at that, that building. But so far, we're looking like things will be on track to complete that project this summer. The Heathbrook, we opened bids at the end of May, contractor was chosen, we did get a general contractor this time. The bids did come in, as has been the case with construction projects lately, higher than budgeted at 1.5 million. We had estimated 1.1 in our warrant article. There will be some massive rebates that will offset some of that, that overage. Trying to find out from our engineering folks what those rebates will look like to help us get closer to that number, but there is enough in the article to cover us, and we can dip into our capital outlay for next year if we need to, for that, to get that project up and running. We're meeting with the contractor onsite next week to talk about logistics. We are looking at six vehicles next week that are up for bid from the LRTA. They were offering some, some of their fleet that they're retiring, and we're going to look at the, the condition of the vehicles as a potential, maybe for a smaller sports team, smaller field trips, things like that, that we could maybe offset some of our transportation costs if we're doing these types of trips ourselves. We own two vans now, they get booked pretty much every day, every school day with our high school programs that are going out to work sites. So sometimes there are needs in other schools that can't get met, so having a couple other vehicles with the, in the, available in the district would, would help us during the school day as well. So we're going to go assess next week and see what the vehicles are like, if they're in decent condition. We're going with John Marshand and Brett Weiss, our maintenance folks who know more about cars than me. And we'll put in bids on next Thursday if there's anything we'd like to buy, but just want to keep you guys updated that that's a, a way we're thinking about maybe cutting some costs in our transportation system. So now my official farewell publicly to Lori. So appreciate always your fresh perspective on things. You've held a lot of positions around in many different districts, and I've just worked here in Tewksbury and never been anywhere else, so it was always great to hear how things worked in other districts and other, in other different positions, too. So that was always nice to get your perspective on things from, from that angle. And I want, I, I agree that the work you've done is not going to end when you leave. I mean, I know just from my perspective, I'm looking at the, the grants differently now, the way that you've explained it as Title I being more of a program than, than we approached it before, and that's going to carry on, I think, after you're gone and, and with our next folks that are, are running those grants. And I'll always appreciate, I appreciate your professionalism and the way you've carried yourself, you know, after you've announced you were leaving, even up until tonight, tomorrow, I mean, tonight, all of our meetings, when we talk about next year, using the "we" pronouns, "us" pronouns, it's like you're still here and you're still going to be here next year. I know I'd probably be checked out by now, but you're going right to the end.
Noted.
So appreciate that, yeah.
I keep forgetting. I'm just very forgetful.
Appreciate that, and we will miss you here, and Lori is better for it.
Thank you. Thank you. I will miss you, too. I'll never forget when you asked me if Abbott was haunted in my, in my interview.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. I'll never forget it, because it really, like, it helped me calm down a little, you know, because you're, you're, you're a serious-looking man, but you're not really that serious. So it, it really struck me coming from you, the little joke, so thank you for all of that. Aw, thank you. Thank you so much. They're beautiful.
Retiring, but thank you. And maybe when we end the meeting, Miss, Madam Chair, if it suits you. Jason, can you just stay hooked up so we can get a good picture of Dale as well? Because I do want to get a picture of the whole group with Lori, okay?
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Libby's update?
Just one.
Yes.
That fleet, would that open up some opportunities for the late bus extension? I know we've talked about that before. Is that one of the considerations in there?
It could be, sure, but we, I think if we do that, if we make those time changes next year, I think we'll be in better shape, late bus-wise. That third tier of buses wouldn't use all the fleet, so we would have buses available to, to do our late buses.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Malkata?
I'm all set, thank you.
Mrs. Anderson?
Just a question on the Heathbrook Renault. It sounds like you're meeting and talking logistics next week, so will we get an update on timing, how long it's going to take, how, if it's going to interfere with next school?
Yeah, that's what we're hoping to kind of nail down with, with the contractor.
So we get an update next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That was it. Mr. Russo?
Just one quick thing. How much did you say the, the Win bid came in at?
The Win?
1.5?
No, that was the Heathbrook.
I'm sorry, the Heathbrook.
Yeah.
I probably.
I probably, 1.5.
Yeah, 1.5.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I have no questions, but I'm thrilled to hear you're exploring the idea of looking at maybe some alternative transportation opportunities, that, anything to offset, that's a big, it's a big bill.
It is, yeah.
Appreciate that. And I'm forward to hearing more about it. Okay, moving on now for the consent agenda. Was there anything additional in the consent agenda you wanted to cover? Any questions or comments from anybody on the committee regarding the consent agenda? Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept it.
So moved.
Okay, so a motion by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, second by Mr. Russo. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, aye, and that passes unanimously. And now with our school committee member reports, this should be easy after hearing from CPAC tonight. Mrs. Bea Joni Smith or Mrs. Anderson on the CPAC?
Um, yeah, I think they covered pretty much everything that's going on. They have one more meeting, virtual, 6:20.
Okay, and wellness, that would be, they, you guys did meet this week, right? Mrs. Anderson, Mr. Malkada?
We did. I can give an update. So we, we did meet this week. We talked a little bit about some of the things that are coming up for the next year. The vape detectors in the high school was one, the yonder pouches was another. And then we talked a little, just a little bit more about how some of these community events, the following, how can we get into some, some of the wellness aspect of that, too. I think the, the decision was, let's let them run through the first one and get that going, and then see how we can integrate into, to future events like that. And then we did set meetings for, through next year, so we have those on the calendar as well, so we can provide those.
With regards to that, our agenda has the meeting as October 6th, but it's actually October 16th. It's the same day as our meeting, as this committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. And how many meetings did you set for next year?
Abbott is the 16th.
We, so they, we put four on the calendar for next year. We can get, we can probably send those to Gail, the ones that we have out.
Is there any interest in having more than four meetings?
So we talked about that a little bit, I think, when we get into the school year next year. And then something that we also talked about was, we're going to set goals at the first meeting, the first wellness meeting, and the goals are going to be really around the wellness policy updates, where we think we have some gaps or some, something missing. So we're going to take some time that first to kind of set the intention for the rest of the, the year. But I would say that we didn't discuss it a whole lot, more than four meetings, but it's something that we're going to look at for next year.
So did you plan your four meetings that are all the way through June, or just the beginning of the fall?
Nope, the four, yep.
Yeah, yeah, we do. I thought, I think it's five meetings, though.
Okay.
It was every other month. So, yeah, it would be five.
I think it's five.
Yeah, every other month.
Any questions, comments, wellness?
I guess, oh, sorry.
Okay.
He's first.
Um, I'll just say one, just coming off of that committee, it was really important to have a meeting at the beginning of this, prior to the school year starting, because so much happens in those first few weeks. There are important things that are happening nutrition-wise, whatever it is, in that first month. And I think we talked about that when Rich and I were on that committee. So I would maybe suggest that there is some type of communication or conversations that could happen to, to look at meeting before October 6th or 16th, whatever the date is, but.
Yeah.
Any feedback, Rich?
And then, well, and then the only other thing, I misunderstood you, but did you say that one of the goals is going to be on trying to look at gaps to the wellness policy or, or look at gaps to what's happening in practice compared to policy?
Right, yes, right, yeah, sorry, I apologize.
We're approving the wellness policy.
Right, no, it's...
I just want to make sure I like, you have gaps.
No, 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 you're right. It's, it's where do we think we can make some goals to, to get closer to policy?
Understood, clear, clear, all right, appreciate that, thank you.
I think, yeah, and I think that the reason I asked about the number of meetings is having participated as well. I personally found that four meetings, five meetings, there's not a lot you can get done in that amount of time, unless you are looking at data or kind of reviewing something. But in terms of a committee where you want to actually get out there and do something actionable, I found it, I found it hard.
Yeah.
And then I think now this year, you know, the wellness policy has been a tremendous, you know, success coming out of the committee. But just my own personal experiences, similar to Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, was just that it's, you know, it's hard to get a lot done if, if you're meeting.
Every other month, yeah. Yeah, I agree. I think we're going to set the intention at the beginning of the year and see what, where that brings us on how many times we would need to meet.
Yeah, I mean, I think the state requirement or the recommended requirement is four times a year, minimum, minimum. So, I mean, so that's the minimum, but, you know, whatever you guys see fit. So, thank you for the update. And then after wellness, we had a policy subcommittee, which, Mr. Russo?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, we haven't met since last time, but that brings us to our policy changes and proposals. I guess we'll get right into that. We have our first reading tonight, which we've reviewed, and again, are recommending to revise IKB, which is our general homework policy.
Came to us last month, and this is first reading. We'll have one more, you know, month to take a look at this, give any feedback. But this would be a good time if anybody has any thoughts, if we had to circle back on this, any thoughts or comments on...
Nothing was changed from the law.
This is the accurate one.
This is the accurate.
Oh, because there was something, there was something missing.
Yeah. It was revised. So I guess the only thing, maybe just to kind of, because if someone's, someone's watching, we had our summer reading discussion earlier tonight, and, you know, our policy does say we're going to, or the revised policy talks about making every effort to honor students' family time outside of the school calendar, right? Just something to kind of maybe think about a little bit, I guess, and I'm trying to figure out how to, because summer reading is important, we require it, we want to, you know, we want students to take advantage of that. Teachers and staff incorporate that into the beginning of their school year in English. I don't know, I don't know how, quite to think about that piece of it.
I think I, if I, if I understand what you're saying, that it would not be punitive. Summer reading is there as an enrichment to keep our brains alive, to keep students reading.
Engaged, yeah.
It's, you know, to avoid as much of the summer slide as possible, but, and it serves as an entry-level discussion and sometimes a writing assignment not to be punitive if a kid, student did not do it.
Okay, okay.
I could add to, I just, but having young ones, because Rich, Mr., Mr. your kids are older, I think it'll be nice to have this program for my kids who need something to do during the day while I'm working and they're not on their phones or, you know, so I'm, I'm looking at it as an advantage that way.
Yeah. I, I do appreciate that, and we had a lot of conversation about this in the subcommittee, that we did add the language "make every effort" to honor that time. Because I do think, you know, things come up, extenuating circumstances, and at all the, all the grade levels and with all levels of student need. So I, I like the fact that it still allows teachers to do what they think is best for students if they...
I think this policy, I know tonight's only the first reading, also really warrants going back to families, teachers, and students throughout the year, and just because it is a change.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it warrants, you know, input and feedback.
And I think something helpful, too, is this policy, I think we mentioned it last month, it feels like a long time ago, that this did go before the PACs.
Yes.
We, we went through all the...
Principals, surveys, students, surveys. I mean, it just really went out to all stakeholders. Now, again, not everybody weighs in at, you know, at the same time, but we take the relevant feedback we get, as, as you know. And then we, we again vetted it through our townwide PAC after, you know, it had been originally drafted to redraft. So this is a, the final, final draft, at least, as, other than this process.
Right. Yeah, so if there's no more comments, we can move on, yeah?
So for our second and final reading tonight, it's just policy, it's one, it's ADF.
And this is our final reading, and if there are no issues or concerns, I would entertain a motion to adopt.
A motion to adopt our policy ADF as revised and presented tonight.
Second that.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. Bea Joni Smith. And this is to approve ADF wellness policy as it's been revised. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes unanimously, yay! Look at that, that wellness policy, it's taken some time. Okay. And all business.
I will, I will try to be quick. I mean, as you know, we've looked at enrollment many times throughout the year. It's been a topic of high interest as it really serves decision-making around staffing and reorganization of staff. This grid you're looking at, and the classes K through eight on the next page, or PK through eight, are the June 10th most current enrollment in class size in our district. Kindergarten registrations have officially concluded, however, you know, with the kindergarten class, right now, we're a little bit smaller in our next year's kindergarten class than this current. But I just want to say to you, summer can be a really unique timing for a lot of families to get their kindergarteners or even preschoolers enrolled. So with that, we're watching those numbers closely. A shift in a kindergarten total population can happen over the summer and can require us to, you know, disavowate the number of kindergarten staff. So addressing first grade, you can see that big bubble, 303, moving to second grade. Next year, we're going to have two additional second-grade classrooms, 14 second-grade homeroom classes to keep those class sizes down. There's additional new staff that we're adding at the early childhood and elementary level, support staff, new DLCs, and, and more. Final decisions on staffing will occur through the last day of school per our collective bargaining agreement at all grade levels. Now, in the unforeseen, extenuating circumstances over the summer, shifts can even happen then. But pretty much, what I will be able to do is in July, bring you the midsummer class counts and staffing levels at our grade levels, again, barring any, you know, foreseen shifts. Because, you know, again, we're, we're also a shelter district, and should we see anything change there, I will alert you immediately. But right now, we think we'll have a really good handle on all of the enrollment and class scheduling come our July meeting. I do want to note, though, despite some very inaccurate, I guess you'd say, rumors or postings on social media, Tewksbury Memorial High School is fully accredited. And that's a hard word for me to spit out, so my apologies if I mispronounce it. No programs have been cut that would cause any risk to our accreditation, and the students continue to have access to many, many, many early college opportunities. And those include advanced placement, dual enrollment with colleges, local, and Southern New Hampshire University, innovative pathways, as well as new project lead-the-way science courses and healthcare courses, and, and so many more, electives or online electives. As always, if a class, and we talked about this at the last meeting, is under-enrolled, students may need to make other choices. This is very typical at a high school, including ours. We have had discussions directly with the folks at NEAS, that's the Accreditation Board for schools and colleges around staffing needs, especially when it comes to our library. And they've reassured us that there's no minimum service level at high school for library, but more importantly, how students can have adequate access to those resources and related skills. And it talks really about the skills. So, again, we are fully accredited at the high school. I, I don't want anyone out there hearing or believing that there's any rumors or that we are at risk. And again, once that Aspen data rolled over, I will give you that midsummer class and grade level count in staffing updates regarding reorganization of staff, any reductions that had to occur, and any new positions that we've added in the meantime.
Any questions on the enrollment data?
No, sorry.
No? Mrs. Bea Joni Smith?
Uh, no, I, I just wanted one comment. I appreciate this being in the packet month after month. I think it's a really important one to show. I think there's a lot of different narratives that are out, out there. And I think this in itself is such an important one to follow, and just to see the trending of, of students in the schools. I think I asked maybe our last meeting, so starting maybe next year, look at some of the capacity. I think it'll help with the capacity conversations that we're having about our buildings and remediation of our buildings and space. So I, I just, I think that this is a really important part of our agenda that, you know, maybe gets lost because it's buried in here sometimes, but I just want to make sure that people are really paying attention to this because it says a lot about what's going on in our schools, what's going on with our staffing, our conversations that we're having in any of our bargaining units. This is a really big part of it. So I just want to call out the importance of this and, and make sure people see this month over month when we, when we put it out there for them.
Thank you. I also, you know, Madam Chair, through you, this is, we're not only reactive. I think it's important to remember, we pay good money to NESDEC to do projections in historical enrollment and in 10-year and more look-aheads. They're incredibly precise. Now, again, if an unforeseen large enrollment occurred because of circumstances outside of our control, let's just say that, well, we'll have to adapt and address. And, and that's, just like we're addressing right now, the needs in early childhood or elementary, we have to, you know, be that flexible and look at where we can add to those levels and, and reduce possibly at others. And we'll continue, as a district, before me and after me, to look at that enrollment projection in a proactive way, as well as a reactive way when we need to.
That's helpful. One thing that you mentioned that takes me in a different direction, when you talked about Aspen rolling over.
Yes.
Last year, I can't remember what the reason was, but because of the way Aspen rolled over, I think students were late in getting information. Was that a fluke, or is that something that you're planning ahead for this year?
Maybe Mr. Libby can remember. It's typically around the second week of August, however...
Was that something to do with the Center Elementary opening?
We did have issue with grade three, four.
That's what it was.
We also had some new staff, clerical staff in the central office, trying to pull it all together, so, so I, I'll have to go back and look.
No, I vaguely remember this.
Aspen had a refresh on their platform. We had talked about it at one of our meetings.
Okay.
That Aspen was having a refresh on their platform, and there was some teacher information, they, they were changing the coding behind the scenes. We did talk about it at one of our early meetings, because it came up as some people were seeing some things and some weren't.
Yeah, but students weren't getting their assignments, yeah, and things like that. So, yeah, I guess just putting that on your radar again for this year. I can't remember.
I'll let you know if we should.
It was like a very last-minute, people were getting it like very, very last minute.
Well...
They wanted it planned so they could get their supplies and all that.
Right.
In my update, and I can wait till July, but we already have some school supply lists, believe it or not, we haven't even ended, and we asked our principals for that. So four of our six schools already have some of that available, and we'll continue to publish them online as they come up, and put it in the newsletter so that they can see where we're at already.
Great, okay. Thank you so much. And, you know, like Mrs. Bea Joni Smith, I appreciate the information being there each month. I'm really looking forward to this long-range study committee, looking at the schools, because I, I think that's information that has to go hand-in-hand, the historical information as well as the, you know, projected information. So, thank you. And then, so we skipped our next, right? So that was A, so we'll go on to new business in item B, is our summer school and enrichment.
Yes, so you have a draft, again, you had one last time we met, too, of the summer school schedule in your packet. Just want to highlight again the wide variety of opportunities we have for our students, and we have also added the town offerings as well. In addition, we're still waiting to hear if we'll be receiving funds for the Acceleration Academy, but, you know, we're ready to, to launch if we do so. And that can take a little bit of time into, into late June and early July sometimes. We're very proud to be able to offer such a wide variety of different support for students, and we strongly encourage our families to take advantage. This is really, we have some really robust summer programming, which is excellent.
Okay, any questions or comments on the summer enrichment opportunities? No?
Center school's going to be packed.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Madam Chair, I'll just call out the special ed director, Candace, came to one of the CPAC meetings and shared transportation comments on, on summer, the summer school program. It was really well-received, the communication there was great, so just wanted to put that out there, that that was a really, it was a really good conversation between the CPAC membership that was there that night and Ms. Tharrett to discuss that, because I think that's a big change that we're looking at this year for that.
That's great.
Yes.
That's helpful. Okay, and...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our, this is Teria Regan for interim student services.
Well, that was a great segue, Ms. B. Johnny Smith. Madam Chair, the next item is my recommendation of Ms. Candace Tharrett as our 24, 25, school year 24, 25 interim director. This is a mouthful of student services and special education. She is currently serving as the acting director and juggling both roles very well, I might add. Unfortunately, Candace could not be here tonight as she's tending to a family medical emergency. Madam Chair, with that, this recommendation does require a vote of the committee.
Any comments, questions? Any interest in a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendation set forth by Ms. Teria Regan for the Director of Student Services and Special Education.
I'll second. A motion by Mrs. B. Johnny Smith, second by Mrs. Anderson, to approve Mrs. Teria Regan's recommendation for Candace Tharrett as the interim director of Student Services and Special Education. For a roll call vote, how do you vote, Mr. Moncada?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. B. Johnny Smith?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well for unanimous vote. So if you could express our thanks to Mrs. Tharrett, that, you know, we do appreciate her willingness to step up in this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the school calendar update.
Okay.
This might be the fourth time we've talked about this.
Right. I think we have the.
Can we just go back to, tell me you do letter D before we do letter E?
Oh, sorry. Oh. Sorry, I was still leaving.
I'm not leaving.
You did say you might be willing to check out.
We will go back to item D. We will go back to item D, our budget transfer vote. Thank you.
Yeah, so, so basically, the genesis of the transfer is to align our spending in our three major categories so that we're not in a deficit in any of our three major categories, salary, operating, or capital outlay. We worked with the town, our town accountant, to try to identify some areas that we could shift some funding to make that happen. Generally speaking, moving money out of capital outlay to, into maintenance accounts, we just had some really high maintenance costs this year and some big projects, big costs in just boilers, plumbing, electrical, some higher end items that went during the year this year, kind of one of those sort of unlucky years. And we also did have some spending related to that Heathbrook flood. The mitigation measures we took weren't covered by insurance, but we wanted to make sure that we weren't going to have those areas of the school flood again. So we did some work outside the building to make sure that we wouldn't have water entering the building in the future. And those were on us to pay for, so some of those added to that deficit as well. And the moves from salary into operating, generally speaking, we went out looking to hire in several areas psychologists, some therapists, and were unsuccessful, but still needed to provide those services for our students. So we had to look to a contracted service in a lot of areas. So two reasons our contracted accounts rose, and those other areas had some funding available. The other reason we had funding available in the capital outlay, traditionally, we've used some of that funding for educational resources each year, where we had the new ELA program. We felt we're pretty, in pretty good shape as far as educational resources this year. And the Warren article that we got passed this year is funding a couple of our major projects. So it made that capital outlay funding available to help us offset those maintenance costs. Yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be.
Questions, Mr. Russo?
Yeah, actually, just two quick things. One, so are we saying, so we're just going general, are we leaving these, when we do, after we do these transfers, some of these accounts are still negative?
Yeah.
So are we waiting for either grant dollars to offset? Are we waiting for, or are there going to be other transfers?
Yeah, we could do more transfers in July to try to get them, get each, you know.
I don't know how typically you manage that, so that's why I was asking.
The main goal of this was to get us in a position where, you know, I think I sent a document that shows what the account level will look like after the transfer. And the bottom, at that last page, you can see the three major categories. We all still, we have some funding left in each of those. Those feel like we're in good shape to get through the last month of the school year.
And then just the, I guess, follow-up question would be, with the capital outlay transfer of the 300 grand, so are we shifting capital projects or are we just going to say we're never going to do those projects? Like, how is that?
It's just a budget transfer.
Sure.
Because the capital spending was lower this year, and we needed the funding in our maintenance, maintenance areas.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Moncada?
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. B. Johnny Smith? I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget transfer as presented by Mr. Libby.
Second.
And so there's a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. B. Johnny Smith, to approve the budget transfers as outlined by Mr. Libby in our memo. Mr. Moncada, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Mrs. B. Johnny Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So that's a unanimous vote. Thank you for your work on this, Mr. Libby.
Thank you.
Now, back to the calendar. Thank you, Madam Chair. And as anyone has been, if anyone has been following our collective bargaining negotiations with our Tewksbury Teachers Association, you know that through you, the committee, we asked the leadership to join us in a joint labor management meeting to at least document the six extra half-days our kindergarten through grade four teachers were in favor of for extra prep. And with that, we did meet with the leadership team, and we have looked at the register periods for standard space report cards and the needs of the K-4 teachers and collaborated on these dates that you see on the 24, 25 school calendar. Those are the blue, and it's noted in the legend, the K through four only early dismissal days, the six days that were proposed. This is a memorandum of understanding, if you will, that at least this gives our parents the opportunity to schedule appropriately throughout the school year for those additional six F days. We'll still be at the bargaining table, working with the TTA on the topic of prep time, but this helps us move forward with the calendar. And you may notice, we don't have the full legend on the back as we're still, and we'll decide before the July meeting on the start times of the schools in totality. Okay. Any questions on the calendar? Mr. Moncada?
I don't. No, I'm also not.
Okay. Mrs. Anderson?
Just a question, on the, on the additional half-days, alphabet is available, right, for, for the K-4?
Any families that use them, absolutely.
Right, okay, okay. No, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Russo?
No, no, no further questions.
And Ms. B. Johnny Smith?
No questions.
I don't have any questions. I would like to just recognize and acknowledge the good working relationship that, you know, I wasn't in the JLM meeting, but for the school community members that were, for administration who was, and for the TTA leadership that was there, I wanted to say thank you to you all for doing the work. And, you know, hopefully, this is not, you know, I know we're still in negotiations and we're still working through, you know, finding solutions for some problems, but it's, it makes me happy to know that we've at least been able to tackle some.
Moving forward a little bit at a time.
Some issues, yeah. So I appreciate the hard work everybody put into this. Thank you. So, and this requires a vote, if anybody's interested in entertaining.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised 24, 25 school calendar as presented.
A motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. B. Johnny Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
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 And that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. I should be able to get out to families soon, right? And then next, we have the MASC appointment, appointment of a voting delegate. So this is Massachusetts Association of School Committees. This is, Yale had printed out for us just a little bit of registration information. And, you know, on their website, there's a pretty clear explanation in terms of what the delegate is for. What they do is they ask for one member of our school committee to represent our committee at the 2024 Delegate Assembly. What they typically will do is all school committees can apply with interest for resolutions. The board of directors will review those, the subcommittee and the board of directors will review those, and then they put them forth to the delegates. Delegates then will come at the convention and vote on, you know, their thoughts, whether that moves forward. And then MASC would then make that a priority in terms of their, you know, agendas that they take, legislative actions that they try to, you know, move forward. So we would need to nominate a delegate and an alternate. So if anybody has any interest, now's the time to share. That would be in November. I don't know the exact date. It's sometime between the sixth and the ninth. Does anybody have any interest? I mean, Rich and I both have done it. If anybody has any questions, happy to share.
When do we have to give the name by?
So when, when we register, they have to submit the name because then they send out the information on the resolutions and so it's, it has to.
Quite an animated meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm happy to do it, for sure.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
I'm on their board of directors, so I would love for, if somebody else has a stronger interest of doing it, that kind of, you know, shares some of the fun.
It would depend on my availability in November, to commit to it.
It's during the conference, though, that we typically.
Oh, it's okay.
Yeah, so it'll be during the conference. Is anybody, are you interested in being an alternate?
Yeah, potentially, sure.
Okay.
I can, I can be the delegate if, if nobody else is looking, is jumping to do it, I can do it because we'll be there anyways.
So the only.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure, like I said, the exact date. So in years past, they have had it on Friday evening.
Yeah.
Or Saturday morning. Last year, they had it on Wednesday. I'm pretty sure they're not looking to do it again on Wednesday because that was so overlapping with other events. So if it is Friday or Saturday morning, that's just an extra.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so.
I'll make a motion to approve Ms. Anderson as our delegate for MASC with Mr. Moncada being our alternate delegate.
I'll second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now, new school committee matters of interest. Anything to add? B. Johnny Smith?
I'll just make a note, it's obviously a busy time of year. We've been invited to a lot of things. I know a lot of us have fluctuated in and out of all the different things. Just want to put a thank you out there to all the staff who have included us in all of these, whether it's from the high school, senior projects, all the way down to Flag Day. It's been nice to be able to pop into the ones that we can. I know we're all busy as well. And another shout out to all the volunteers right now. I've seen more volunteers in and out of buildings than I think I've ever seen, the people coming and going.
Especially around field days.
Oh, these field days are a lot. So just a thank you to the community and a recognition of how much work has been put into the end of the year, making sure that the kiddos are excited and happy and calm-ish. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Moncada?
Yeah, same as Ms. B. Johnny Smith, just thanks for being invited to all these things. They've been really great. The kids are impressive, the volunteer, it's all, it's really good. So I hope everyone has a great summer.
Ms. Anderson?
Just to piggyback a little bit, having an eighth grader this year, I didn't realize they have their own little lesser senior week going through this last week. And I can see the work that's put into it by the staff, Mr. Weir and his staff at the, at the Wynn, so I really appreciate that. I don't think you realize how much of a milestone it is until you go through it with your, with your kids and how they show the gratitude and appreciation for the kids. The Wynn was really, was really nice this week.
Russo?
Just, I guess, two quick things. One is, so just from a collective bargaining standpoint, you know, I think, you know, we have been making, for the other unit that I'm involved in anyway, other than the TTA, we've been making significant progress and, you know, hopefully, we're going to have some, you know, sort of tentative agreements there at some point very, very soon. And then lastly, because I did say I was going to save it to the end, I think from my perspective, Lori, I'm going to echo something that Brenda said, your work ethic is stellar. That is, that is by far just something that I personally have enjoyed seeing in this district. The relationships that you have built, things that staff have come up to me and said, you know, I can't, you know, how to be, how to be fine, Lori, this is amazing. The impact that I think you have made, you've paved the way. I think personally, I've been able to sort of share on a personal level with you just because our children have been going through some of the same things with graduation and recruitment and all that fun stuff at the same time. So personally, I've enjoyed some of those conversations. But I really think it's not the time, it's not the little time that you spent here, it's the fact that you've left, you've left your mark on Tewksbury. And so Belrika is going to do well because of you and because I know that we've done well because of you, so it's not goodbye.
I have done so well because of you, like really, that you all paved the way for me. And like I said, the support. And I left a school, you know, talk about emotional, that was a really tough leave. And I felt so at home there. And to come here and so instantly feel the connection, it really does say so much about, about the community and all of the work that you guys are focused on doing and the teachers. It's just, it's a really great place. So thank you. I would not have been successful without all of you. There's no question. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. And my only matters of interest, just as an update for the upcoming, our TTA negotiations on June 26th, we have agreed to an extended time, so we should be meeting at 1:00 PM on LGI-1. We've agreed to two hours per unit with a 30-minute break in between, so that we should adjourn around 5:30 or sooner. And then to piggyback on a little bit of what you guys are saying, a huge thank you to the teachers who have increased their capacity for our students during these weeks. It's fun, it's a lot of excitement, but I can imagine, just in knowing what I can see in students, they're just really excited. So that's going to translate interestingly in the classroom. So I appreciate the fact that so many teachers, so much staff, just really go out of their way to make the end of the year so special in so many different ways for kids, so. And that's really it. I, you know, happy summer, and I hope people enjoy themselves and come back in September refreshed and ready to start over. Yeah, okay. Future sub, school committee meeting dates, we have July 24th. We have a workshop at 5:00 PM with the school committee to look at goal setting, followed by our regular meeting, August 14th. We meet with the administration and have a workshop there, followed by our regular meeting. September 18th is our first school committee meeting of the school year. We have subcommittee dates, the CPAC, as we've heard, is June 20th. Wellness, October 16th, and policies should be, now that the school year is settling down, I would imagine, pretty soon. But that is still not been set. Future addenda items. Future agenda items, one thing I can say is the committee, as I mentioned, is going to meet in open session to look at goal setting. The superintendent review will also be covered in July, so the committee can expect by the end of the month. Mrs. Johnson should be sending out the rubric. If you have any questions, let me know, or let Mrs. Teri Regan know if you have specific questions, and then we'll probably be receiving some information from Mrs. Teri Regan to adequately and accurately fill that out. Any other future agenda items anybody would like to add?
One that might be pertinent with, just with the discussion of possible changes in start and stop times and busing, going along with negotiations, that might be something we want to address, certainly before the start of the school year. It doesn't have to be the next meeting, but...
Sure.
Just, you know, it may or may not be, I think it's pertinent, but...
Yeah, as appropriate. I mean, if we can, that sounds good. Anything else?
Just one other thing to consider, I think we got an email about the possible summer institute, so whether it's on, during our goal setting, but perhaps a recap from any of us who attend.
Great, that's a good idea. Perfect, okay. And so that's it? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Russo, second by Mrs. B. Johnny Smith. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Adjourn at 9:21 PM.